The traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas-Tlanket people. Under Communications tonight, we have a couple of late on the tables. One for Item 7A4, request to accommodate the Ward Cove shuttle operations, and one from Governor Dunleavy, Community Health and Education Partners for Fentanyl Warning. Before we move into persons to be heard, we would like to have a moment of Mr. David Johnston's time, if we could, please. Mr. Johnston, on behalf of the city council, it's my honor to present to you the large water system professional of the year. This is a statewide accolade for 2022.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, mayor, and manager. Back in eighty-nine, I graduated from high school in Ketchikan High School here in town. Got hired on as a temporary for six months to KPU. I guess they did a good job because they offered me an apprentice position the very next year. So I've been working for KPU for thirty-two full-time years and one temporary. I started doing the apprenticeship, got out of apprenticeship in ninety-four. I became foreman in two thousand and one. So I've been foreman now for twenty-one years of being a foreman. It's been an enjoyment. Really like my field that I work in. We're wonderful people. It's just been really a pleasure. And I'm very honored that my industry has recognized me for being the operator. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's going to move us on to persons to be heard. We have quite a list of folks tonight, so we are going to ask people to keep it to three minutes. Madam Clerk, who do we have first, please?
Mr. Paul Jarvey.
I'm Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Jarvey. I own Julie's, Fine Jewelry and Gifts. I have two locations in town, fifty-five Showenbar Court and our new location at two-two-four Front Street. I'm here to speak about the Ward Cove Group's plan. And as I read it in the newspaper and tonight, I can't find anything wrong with it. I think it's a compromise, like the spirit of parking the ships. They were supposed to be at each dock sort of equally. I can't see any problem addressing this issue and passing it along. I do want to remind the council that the Burger Queen side of the tunnel is growing, is thriving, and the buses that have come to Bird Four are helping those businesses along. But in the spirit of sharing the wealth, I think the Ward Cove issue is a good one, and I want you to consider that seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carl Ritchie.
Hi, I'm here because my further license is up for renewal or approval of the same is before you today under new items. And I just want to let you know that the issues that are mentioned in there are taken care of. And I don't know if the Fire Marshal has gotten back to you about that yet. But I'm working on those and should have them all taken care of by the time of the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Ritchie? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Deborah Hayden.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Deborah Hayden. I reside at eleven zero eleven Victorston Court. And I'm the Executive Director of Pro Ketchikan, Ketchikan Economic Development Organization. And I've brought some materials for you to learn. In case you haven't heard of it, tomorrow at noon, there's a Zoom meeting about prosperity in Ketchikan. For a long time, I have been preaching that we need to have a diverse economy with a variety of businesses that balance each other out. We saw the truth of this in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, when one of the major industries collapsed and it caused a great deal of pain and suffering in our town. So we are, I believe, doing this study now for, oh, since last May, I believe. What we've been doing is interviewing with community leaders and business people in town and getting, going over what our strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities are, and getting their suggestions for new businesses or existing businesses that we can expand. And now we're going to open this up to the public and want everybody to participate and give us their input as to any opportunities they might see that we could develop there. And so we're going to have this meeting tomorrow. Robert Venables, Southeast Conference, the Executive Director, will be speaking about the Southeast Conference twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, economic plan. And Michelle here will be saying a few words about the need for a variety of businesses in town. And I will be talking about this process and about, I'll give a brief profile of some of the features of the Ketchikan economy. And then we'll open it up for public discussion. At the end, it will be on, it will be recorded and it will be available. And the next step would be we will synthesize all of the input that we've gotten over the past many months and put together not just a report, but an action plan with a timeline, actions, and the funding sources for how we're going to get this done. So there you have it.
Any questions for Ms. Hayden? Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson?
Good evening. My name is Mary Stevenson to you, the council. I provided a packet, hopefully archival documents, that you will take an opportunity to read at another time. In January two thousand and nineteen, the community was reviewing port upgrades in preparation for world-class ships arriving in southeast Alaska. Norwegian cruise line Bliss was mentioned in the Bermele-Ajma partner presentation. Soon after, city negotiations within NCL collapsed and the RFP port reconfiguration plan was put on hold. NCL did not waste any time teaming up with Ward Cove Group, a private endeavor with long-term land and port investment and goal to make a destination within itself a direct competition with its longstanding mentor, Port of Ketchikan. Within two years, the longest pier built in the United States was completed and the best of Bliss arrived last August. Two thousand and twenty-two cruise schedule indicates the mill will be hosting five ships that will include the Spirit and the Bliss on the same day, approximately six thousand five hundred and ten passengers. Future looks positive to increase shifts threefold by two thousand and thirty. However, their story is comparable to a separation or a divorce. Something is missing. Ketchikan's port management used fear with stakeholders. It will take time to fill NCL vacancies. Yet, this year, you're looking at a sixty percent recovery. Six cruise brands are committing to birthing contracts, projecting twelve thousand passengers downtown is a good start. Yet, like NCL, something is missing for Ketchikan stakeholders. Because Ketchikan is without a plan, whether it be a strategy, a transportation, port reconfiguration, or upland investments, it is difficult to accommodate this intrusion in NCL's shuttle bus terminal in the separation settlement. Is NCL a client of the port or a vendor for the city of Ketchikan? What is at stake? Is the visitation rights, the ability to drop off pickup patrons at the front door, with minimal long-term investment, close to shopping and attraction, the bragging rights to Ketchikan, knowing full well the cul-de-sac would be older, overburdened with congestion, pollution, altering our historical legacy and well-being of residents into perpetuity? When offered the Southeast Discovery Center, the heart of downtown, NCL didn't want to finance the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars startup and seasonal expenses, citing Bird Two was more convenient, less costly, preferred one terminal instead of splitting operations, causing confusion with patrons and logistics. NCL, now a vendor, is asking for downtown terminal to become a burden on the city public works and general budget, while the Port Enterprise Fund benefits as it has a mechanism to negotiate expenses with NCL. Once again frustrated with municipal negotiations, NCL sought a private agreement with Southeast Sevador and cut a better deal. How quickly learned, how many, how quickly one learns how many has known since two thousand and six. Bird Four, Showenbar Road is not in the heart of downtown.
Excuse me, Mary, can you summarize pretty soon, please?
And summarize.
Thank you.
I, thank you. I am asking that you do not, that you, let me see. Come with a plan. You do not have a plan as you're about to give NCL downtown rights. You have not yet addressed the two thousand and nineteen RFPs in order to improve our docks. And you have to let NCL develop the dirt lot there and call it the New Town Welcome Center. And they have to find their own lot, develop their own welcome center. Then offer a circulation of trolleys throughout the downtown, making sure all four historic districts get the flow of all of the docks that are here.
Thank you.
It's only, should be a two-year agreement while they get Bird Four organized and built. They just built a pier for, the largest pier in the United States. They can certainly create a welcome center, and we do our part with the trolley.
Okay. Any questions for Mary? Thank you.
Norman Areola.
Okay, Norman. You're up. You're up. You're up, Norman.
You took up halfway time. Honorable Vice Mayor, esteemed City Council, city staff, my name is Member A. D'Or. I've been running for seventy-five years and I live in thirty-two twenty, which is my court. I wish I had all night at this voting, but I tell you, we just cut an area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, let me read something I found on my messenger. It says, "When our time on earth, on this earth, it's done money or material things will not matter, but the love, time, and kindness we've given others will shine in the one forever." When the last tree is cut down, the last river is poisoned, the last fish caught, then only will man discover that he cannot eat money. And you heard me at the last meeting last month, last week of last, last thirty of last month about Canadians mining in the state of Alaska leaving their mines abandoned and poisoning our fresh water to clean our fish. I also saw in the paper, paper that the Grand Council could address the issue about the contaminated plum areas around here. I have yet to see any signs out at Rotary Beach, and I go out there every day, seven days a week, two to three times a day, letting the tourists get out and wander around. But no signs of these waters are contaminated with human feces. Of course, that's not your fault, I mean, it's the borough. So I hope the borough is listening out there. And then about the Bird Four issue. Now, the city works for you guys, you work for us. And I think it's imperative that we have at least two council members on that committee when they address the issue that the Ward Cove Group wanted. The first time that they met, the city left a bad taste in their mouth, so that's why they left, and that's why they broke up on negotiations. So we need at least two city council members on that committee to sit down and hear exactly what's being said, because I don't know if you guys are being told what was said. I hope you got anything in writing. Another thing is the hawking of all these jewelry stores on this island. Now, the last week of the, when we had that nice beautiful weather prior to the rain showing up, I had, I didn't have to go until nine-thirty in the morning on my tour, so I had a little over an hour to walk around. And I would make the complete loop from Mission down Main, down, and down first, the, where the, when you come up with Bird One, Scrooge Millway. And just about every jewelry store, there was one of their employees out, handing out flyers, brochures, whatever, to try and entice people to go in. So I picked it up on my own to say that you guys cannot do that. I said, "The city council passed an order that the first Thursday of April, then no hawking will take place." And it's unfortunate that you guys weren't able to hire somebody, you know, Phil Alderson, back in two thousand and eighteen or nineteen, he did that. He's a retired police officer. Why he didn't come back the next year, I don't know, it's not my business. But it's unfortunate that the city doesn't have the money to hire somebody to put a stop to all this hawking. What I want to get at is on that Thursday that I, before I had to go out, I observed an employee from the jewelry store at the corner of St. away and Main Street.
Can you summarize pretty soon, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
To make a long story short, when I addressed the employee that Saturday, he said, "He tried to hand me this book right here." I didn't take it. I said, "You know I love to do that." And he got my face and, "I'm the owner, I won't have this business." I said, "Well, that doesn't make any difference, you can't hawk." And he told me his name, told me where he's from, and I walked away and he said, "Hey, what's your name?" And as I was walking away, I kind of looked to my left and I could see him, I thought he was, hey, he's right two steps behind me. But he said, "I'm talking to you." I said, "Go away." And he, and he mouthed the word fucking dated, and then went back into the store. So I told the file complaint, which I did. And whether there was anything done or not about it, I do not know. But that's the kind of crap you gotta put up with, with some of these people that only come here five months out of the year and kind of get people, entice people to go into their stores by doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Martha Thomas.
Hi, everybody. Hold on a second. Class is over here. Okay, dear City Council, hello again. I'm here to speak again regarding the dock vendor program and the reduction of passengers on the ship. I handed each one of you guys one of my summaries. And the reduction of the ships' time of that they're in port. As you can see, we bid on the boost according to the ship's calendar that we received, showing that we're expecting one point four million people. As we bid, we assume the ships would be sailing at least seventy to ninety percent full. As of today, the ships are sailing around twenty to thirty percent full, and their time in port is limited. Some of the ships will not call Ketchikan port for at least thirteen-plus weeks. This morning, while working in the visitors bureau, and the ship was leaving one hour early, there were no sales made. There's twenty boosts in the visitors bureau, no, no sales this morning. And we had to refund once again passengers that didn't have time to go on our tour, not only our company, but several other companies as well. Tomorrow, the eclipse will only, will only be in port from two thirty, and it has canceled its port of port of May twenty-seventh altogether. I feel that the contract needs to be reevaluated, reevaluated based on the information that we were given when we bid. Like I said once before, without these dock boosts, the city has the potential to lose at least a half a million dollars of warrant revenue. Any questions? Do you guys have any questions? So I think you guys should reevaluate the bids, because basically we have a potential of losing all the dock boosts, because people can't afford the boosts at a long refund. Any questions? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle O'Brien.
Thank you. Michelle O'Brien, three-two-four-three-two-six, Mary Mans Trail. For reference, that is Upland directly above the Salmon Ladder on Park Avenue. I'm the one that brought forward the parking issue on Park Avenue. I've been a resident on Park Avenue in that neighborhood for six years now. Also, I should let you know that I diligently attempted to contact all of our neighbors. It's a very close-knit neighborhood made up of elderly, longtime residents, renters. I believe there's one brand-new Airbnb. And then Upland, there's several duplexes. I've tried to contact everyone sans the Upland duplexes, I just don't know who those people are. By and large, and two of my neighbors are here, one of whom will speak to this, I have received nothing but favorable comments in terms of mending or creating some sort of parking proposal for Park Avenue. The issue is this, I can't think of another neighborhood that is purely residential in Ketchikan that is so directly affected by tourism. On a given day, and I promise you, I don't stand on my deck, I'm high up, so I can see everything. I don't stand on my deck and count the buses, but there might be three, four buses or vans that pull up, including Mr. Areola, you gave a great tour, at the, at the new salmon viewing platform. They generally stay anywhere between seven and ten minutes, and then they leave, and then they move on. The issue is this, we have the Ketchikan apartments who right now have between, I can estimate, twelve to sixteen units. They're grandfathered in, the building was constructed in nineteen twenty-five, twelve to fifteen units. And I can roughly count, this year at least, between four and five vehicles of theirs that are parked on Park Avenue, often poorly. With that being said, they're also parked illegally on the bridge during the tourism bus time, which then necessitates the tourism buses pulling in front of the Ketchikan apartments around the curve, thus creating a single lane. You're looking at a head-on collision there, folks. There's no visibility whatsoever. So that is a huge problem right there. The other things I discovered when I was speaking with the staff at the borough is the Ketchikan apartments, although they are grandfathered in and not permitted or required to have one parking space per unit in that building, they're actually located in the central commercial zone. They are not part of the Park Avenue district for parking purposes. So what we are proposing as a neighborhood is that we come to an amenable solution where the people that live year-round in our neighborhood can have a happy balance. All of us love the tourists, we're not complaining in any way, shape, or form, where we can actually have a place to park. The closest place for me is sometimes down near Showenbar Middle School, if there's nothing available. So with that being said, are there any questions?
Any questions from the round?
Abby.
What option, out of the three options that staff came forward with, do you support?
I don't know the behind-the-scenes details in terms of actually affecting the operational mode of this. I think Chief Walls, I appreciate his efforts, his option three is fantastic. Option three, which allows resident permit parking from six P.M. to six A.M., is really great, because Kathy Cooley of Salon Park Avenue has been there for years. She has people come and get a haircut for an hour and leave. We also have residents who have home caregivers who come for about an hour and then they leave, and that's during the day. However, that would also not allow, if I would like to have a simple barbecue at my house after six P.M., my guests would not have a permit, and therefore, they would have to park wherever. If we had to have that option, that would be my preference. If, the neighbors and I have talked, if there was another option, the option would be, that would be great, would be two-hour parking unless you have a resident permit. But right now, guys, it's an accident waiting to happen, really a tragedy waiting to happen. And I hate to call out the Ketchikan apartments, but the facts are the facts.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mita Jahan, Jahaney? Sorry.
Good evening, honorable mayors, councilmen, city managers. I'm Mita Jitani, one-one-six, Front Street. We have been here twenty-two years, I have quite a few stores in downtown, two jewelry stores, and we go on some T-shirt stores also, for mostly tourist business. We also have stores in Juno and Scagway. And what I wanted to bring to the city's attention is that Ketchikan is really hurting in the first twenty days. We, we have the same ships in all the three ports, but just the way the docks are laid out here, the way the ships are laid out, and of course, Watpo is not helping. It is really hurting Ketchikan. Most of the businesses are unfortunately in the south end of town. You know, the concentration of businesses, there's much more. We all pay taxes, we are all there, we've been there for twenty-two years. And we are members of this community, we do contribute to the community and taxes. So it's not that we are only here for five months and then we are gone, because we are actively involved in the community too. The fact is that it used to be equitable distribution of the ships, twenty-five percent in each dock. It's not like that anymore. This year, Dock Two and Dock One are combined, going to get between thirty and thirty-two percent of the passengers. And with the Ward Cove buses coming to Dock Four, it's hurting us even more. And the city is definitely losing out on the sales tax dollars, because there's not that many stores open yet on the docks three and four, which are getting a majority of the cruise ships. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, and hopefully, you'll make the decision in the favor of Dock Two, or at least bringing the buses in, and if you can look into a little bit more equitable distribution of the cruise ships also. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Dick Kooz?
Hi, Dan. I'm not back to do anything.
There's an empty seat right there.
Right there, Dan. It's your seat.
It's your seat.
Anyway, you know who I am, Dick Kooz, at the five Anderson Drive. And I just want to talk a minute about the bus shuttle that everybody's involved with. Two things. One, I don't know the details of what's being proposed by Ward Cove for Dock Two and Three, but having worked on the docks as long as I have and watching it this time here, it's really a bad thing for those people to have to take an hour, a half an hour out of their time to get back and forth between that Dock Four gravel parking lot. And you hear a lot of comments if you're down there, so there's two benefits that we can solve, I think. One, we could make happier campers out of them, and merchants downtown could probably be a little more benefit, which would benefit us and the borough, or the city and the borough. But anyway, whatever the details are, my thoughts is we should utilize Dock Two and Three if there are no ships on them. I mean, no ships on them, so that gives it, it makes it work much easier. The third thing is, is we need to look to the future, because this is a low year. Half, half the passengers are coming. Something's gonna have to give next year if everything is full. And so I have been a proponent of the Disco Center, or the Discovery Center. It's downtown, it takes some parking off the street, but I think in the long run, this year's a good time to test it and make it work on the off days that you can't use Two and Three. Because I really honestly think it'll work, and you may not even need all the way around the business, or you may only need part of it, especially this year. But take a look at it, and staff needs to sit down with Ward Cove and the people that are running the shuttle. I don't even want to get, take any city staff to run the shuttle. Might take some trash containers, but the other thing is, I've been hit up by some of the members of Borough Assembly, and they're saying they will help pay for that over there. So my other concern is we've got to get our two governments to work together. This is for the community and the benefit of those visitors coming to town. So that's, that's kind of my thoughts. So, uh, you guys have fun doing it. You got any questions, though?
Any questions? No gloating next time. No gloating next time, yeah. Thank you, Dan.
I'm sorry, I can't, Eli?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, what, what's your last name, sir?
Estrodi. Hey, I've been in this town, I think, 17 years, 15 years. Um, in the jewelry business, opened my own business in the last year. So I consider myself local. My partner is 100% local, kids in school, everyone are in school. And we're struggling this year, guys. We need the city support. I mean, I'm going to repeat what everyone said. The distribution is horrible, just horrible. Tomorrow, there are two ships, I think, in Ward Cove, am I correct? If I have to schedule correctly, two ships. And very something in town. I mean, we guys need your support. I mean, everyone here is paying taxes. The gentleman said there is no one to enforce the, when people are, what's the word?
Hocking.
Hocking. If we had more traffic than we're supposed to, I'm sure you guys could figure it out. I'm sure we would have all find a way to chip in, to find someone that will take care of that because we don't want hocking. We don't want people to be rude. But the distribution needs to, you guys need to find a solution. I mean, I've seen what's going on when they're dropping the people in Dock Four. It's, first of all, it's not safe. Accidents are going to happen there. There's a lot of people there, there's a traffic jam. And you see, the other peers are empty. It just doesn't make any sense, any sense. We're losing a lot of money this year just because of that. And not only that, you need to hear that little bit of people that come, they complain. The bits and pieces, they come, they don't understand why they need to be all the way there, then walk, then being rushed in. I saw how they've been rushed into the, to the buses. No one even give them chances to, am I correct? They won't even give them a chance to mingle with us and walk around town. So I feel that we're now, we're all been here so many years. We've been, uh, between, uh, a battle of two, of alligators, you know? The owners of Dock Four, the owners of, uh, Ward Cove, everyone are taking care of their, their interests. But us, you know, regular people that has businesses in town, we're struggling deep. So I think I'm talking behalf of all of my friends here. We need something to be changed and, and quickly because it's, if not, it's going to affect a lot. We're all working here, we're renting houses, we're going out to restaurants, we're spending money, but it's becoming very, 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 very difficult. It's hurting us substantially, am I, am I correct? Do you agree with me? And it doesn't matter if it's jewelry, t-shirts. I'm next to the biggest t-shirt store in town. My store is same door with the biggest t-shirt store in town. I've never seen them close their doors a minute before the ship leaves. Every day they close their doors, hour, two hour before the ship leaves. I see it. So it's again, it's not only jewelry, it's not only, it's, it's all of us. If it's food, if it's tourism, if it's, we can see it. So I think we all appreciate if something is going to be done about it and, uh, just to support us. I mean, you've been here, you've seen what happened in the last two years. People need city support. You know, you read online, you read all over the news, you see all over the world that cities are helping to attract tourists and to help the local businesses. And I think we all expected it would be the same here. Thank you. Really thank you.
Um, last, Deidra Holman?
Good evening. My name is Deidra Holman and I live at 722 Park Avenue. Um, I'm here in regards to the Park Avenue parking, uh, question, looking for a solution. Um, I am a neighbor of Michelle's and another, we do have another neighbor here. And I agree with, um, Michelle's assessment that it's an accident waiting to happen. There's just a lot of traffic from large vehicles right on that Park Avenue Bridge. However, um, I'm not quite decided that any solution has been arrived at. And I would like to encourage the council to ask staff to work with the neighborhood and meet with the neighborhood. And I think we have a lot of local knowledge. I've lived, um, on Park Avenue since the 1950s. I can pretty much tell you how buildings have been, have evolved, how parking has evolved there. Um, we all know that the dumpster took out two, made two parking spots on our street already. We've been promised we won't have any more parking spots taken out. And yet I'm hearing rumors that we're now, where the crosswalk was proposed and then decided not to put that crosswalk in. Now we're talking about moving, uh, tour buses there and maybe having parking at night. It's all very up in the air and I would really ask that we could work as a neighborhood together because we, we understand the traffic, we understand the needs. When Michelle spoke about the assisted, the person who requires outside assistance, um, the person who helps her, I've seen her stay there four or five hours. And, um, we have an elderly person on our street who is at the end of his life. His family comes to visit. Are you going to say they can only be on the street for two hours? That just doesn't seem to be the solution. So, um, again, I, because of this three-minute limit, I would just ask, could we work with staff? Could staff contact us? I've been at the meetings before. It's not like nobody knows my name and certainly everybody, just not everybody knows Michelle. And so there's people who are interested in this and would be more than willing to try to help reach an amenable solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have for public comments.
Is there anybody else who did not sign up who wishes to address the council this evening? Hi, what's your name, please?
Dion Booth, A27 Peterson Street, right up from Park Ave. So I'm with them. We frequent there and, uh, the tour bus on the bridge is a huge problem, very scary. Um, everyone's, you know, especially in the hustle bustle of the season, it's, uh, very scary to try to get by there. You know, you, you can't wait forever, but you, you might just head on somebody. But like I said, you can't wait forever. Um, also, I'd like to ask, uh, the property tax is going to be, that's a vote that's going to happen very soon, correct?
Correct.
Uh, I just heard a lot about businesses and a lot about that. And I'd like to say it's a very poor timing after, um, two years of hardship for this town. Uh, you're not just increasing the property tax on people who own big extravagant homes. You're doing it to landlords who are going to push it onto the renters. Um, and I'm a homeowner, I'm not a renter, but every year our property is assessed for more when I haven't done anything to it. So essentially I'm already paying more taxes. So you're going to double, double tax by saying, well, now your house, even though nothing has changed, it's worth $6,000 more than it was last year. And then you're going to increase the percentage. Um, I don't understand the logic. I thought in December you guys had cut the budget specifically so you wouldn't have to do this. So I don't know why this is a big push. But, um, you know, you're really, you're really hurting a town that's already hurting if you're going to go through with this. A lot of, you know, I'm not, like I said, it's not just homeowners, but it's landlords that are going to feel this and they're going to push it right down to the little guy. The guy who's already struggling, the guy who's been struggling hard, bad because of the pandemic. And if you guys go through with this, you're basically hurting them on purpose. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would like to add 6A1 Boards and Commissions and as well as 7A2, the Bituminous Road Repair. There's no objections.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gas.
Uh, I would like to remove item 5A4 from the consent, please.
Public Works Engineering Travel Business?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we will remove that. Any other changes? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I move Dickinson.
Second.
Number 13, could you please read the items?
Approval of minutes, City Council meeting of May 5th, 2022. Exempting the procurement of the IBM iSeries Platform Maintenance Agreement for the Information Technology Department from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code COMSOFT. Budget transfer, Police Department Personnel Services and Wages, Liquor License Renewal Applications, Widens International LTD Doing Business as Fat Stands Lounge and Wands International. Exempting the procurement of terminating long-distance services from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Thin Q. Exempting the procurement of annual co-location services for the Telecommunications Division from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Lunavi Inc., formerly Greenhouse Data. Appointments to Boards and Commissions from Mayor Kifer and, um, the...
7A2? By Two Minutes Road?
Oh, yeah, the Word of Contract number 2211, the 2022 By Two Minutes Road Repairs Galassa Inc., Doing Business as C Col.
Any discussion? Clerk will call, real please.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, then I guess that will take us to item 5A4. Budget transfer, Public Works Engineering Department's 2022 Travel Business Account. I need a motion, please.
Your Honor, I move the City Council authorized the acting city manager to transfer 5,000 from Public Works Engineering Department's 2022 Regular Salaries and Wages account number 500 dot oh one to the Travel Business Account number 600 dot oh one to fund travel expenses related to filling Engineering Department vacancies.
Second.
It's been moved in second to discussion. Mr. Gas?
Your Honor? Uh, yes, uh, I wanted to get this removed from the consent because I think it warrants a discussion. You know, this was one of the smaller items that we, um, made a cut to when we were doing the budget because we're trying to find ways, um, that we can save the taxpayers' money without laying people off. And, uh, this was one that I think was a worthy cause. While I understand the need to travel people here for interviews, it's something that has long bothered me and I've heard a lot of complaints about. And I think, uh, while it's necessary at times, I think for some positions we need to see in this day and age, if we can't utilize Zoom, WebEx and other, uh, means of interviews in that way, rather than spending the people's money to fly, uh, candidates here for certain positions. So that's why I object to this.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like the acting city manager to weigh in, please.
Sure, Your Honor. Um, so this transfer is necessary in order to bring candidates that we have already interviewed via Zoom or WebEx to town. Um, as Mr. Hilson, Public Works Director stated in his memo, we have been unsuccessful in trying to find local candidates for key positions within the Public Works Department. So we're having to look outside. We are asking someone to potentially move to our community. I think it's best that that candidate come to town so that we can meet them. They can see the town. We can get a feel for who they are before we potentially extend a job offer. So while I understand Councilmember Gas's concerns that this is an unnecessary expense, I think it's a necessary one in order to validate candidate's fitness for a position before we go so far as to make a job offer sight unseen.
Any other?
Your Honor?
Mr. Matani?
Your Honor, why can't, with the digital age, with the advances made on Zoom and WebEx, why can't we fill out the candidates on Zoom or on WebEx and show them through digital means uptown rather than spending the money? That now we're talking about raising taxes, raising the mill rate. Every penny appreciate saved below those taxes. We heard residents complaining about their property taxes being assessed higher. And then now we think, we have to think of raising the mill rate so that we can meet expenses.
Councilmember Matani, again, we've, we've interviewed these candidates via WebEx. Um, I'm sure they've done quite a bit of their own research. Um, there's a lot out there on the internet in terms of what a person can discover about Ketchikan. Um, speaking for myself, I would be very hesitant to move to a community without visiting it. I think if we're interested in a candidate, this is part of the process that we go through. Again, to validate, um, that that's a good fit for the position and a good fit for the community. I understand that it's an additional expense, but if we are asking for a candidate to absorb that expense, I'm pretty sure I know what that answer would be. It should be, no, thank you. And we'll be back to score one. Um, I appreciate the suggestion. Um, but again, this is, this is pretty standard when it comes to recruitment.
Councilmember Kissler?
Yeah, not only would you not want to move somewhere, uh, that you've never visited before, but Ketchikan is a unique place with unique, uh, beauty, but also unique troubles. And so without, you can't understand the isolation of the island by looking at pictures. And there's thousands and thousands of people that come to visit because this is an unusual place. You can't conceive of the place until you see it in person.
Any other discussion? Senior Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gas?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Matani?
No.
Kissler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. That will move us on actually to new business. Item 7A1, Ketchikan Beaches Fecal Bacteria Sampling Presentation, Southeast Alaska Watershed Coalition. Hi.
Hi. Um, I think we have a few slides to share. I'm Rebecca Belmar. I'm with the Southeast Alaska Watershed Coalition out of Juneau and I appreciate your time this evening. Um, I'm going to be sharing some information and updates about the Ketchikan Beaches Fecal Bacteria Sampling Project, um, some results and findings and an area-wide bacteria management plan. Next slide. Um, and first I would just like to acknowledge that, um, I live and work on the unceded territory of the Akuan on Klinka Ani. Um, and this project, uh, takes place on the territory of the Tantakuan and Southern Quan on the Klinka Ani. Uh, next slide. Um, and the Ketchikan Indian Community Cultural Resources staff have been primarily responsible for collecting samples and data for this project. Again, and then, um, Alaska DEC has provided funding for this project. Excellent. Um, and so just a really brief history, um, the sampling started back in 2017 in response to concern about potential fecal contamination at beaches. And you can keep rolling through these. And, um, high concentrations are found all along the coast and so sampling has been continuing since then. Um, and that funding, um, through the Alaska Beach Grant Program really focuses on human health. Um, and to that end, they really, um, kind of sidebar the project into, um, summer, the summer season. So May through September is when these samples are collected. Um, and this map shows where samples have been collected, um, along the road system from Kitzing Gove all the way down to Haring Cove. Um, and so when I'm showing, um, information about these beaches, it'll be in order as you would, you know, drive past them, um, along the, the road there. Um, I mean, we're thinking about potential bacteria sources. There are, there are a lot here. Um, there are, um, individual septic tanks that may not be functioning properly, um, private sewer treatment outfalls to the marine environment, wildlife and pet feces, um, private boats, ferries, cruise ships at sea and in harbors and docks, um, the big public wastewater treatment facility outfalls, um, and just potentially, um, deficiencies in those systems where sewage may be leaking into the environment. So there's a lot of potential things going on in slide there. And so for all of those locations, we've kind of gone... And so for all of those locations, we've kind of gone through and looked at the proximity to identify potential sources to those. And all of these sites have multiple sources, not just one. There are multiple possible sources of bacteria at all of these locations. And we've, you know, we've done some genetic work on the bacteria to try to identify where it's coming from. And we've found that the fecal bacteria is sourced from human sources at all of these beaches. We found dog-sourced bacteria at all of these beaches except for Mount Point Surprise Beach, and then gold-sourced bacteria at all of these beaches. And when we're looking at these bacteria concentrations, we're, you can just keep sliding through, sorry. Comparing them to state water quality criteria, and those are established to protect human health. And those are related to recreation, so being in the water, and harvest of shellfish for rock consumption. And we're looking at two different groups of bacteria, enterococci and fecal coliform. And neither of those two in and of themselves are harmful necessarily, but they are a really good indicator that fecal contamination has occurred, and that can bring with it other bacteria and viruses that can cause human health issues. And so we're using those as indicator species. And so the sampling of those bacteria has been going on approximately weekly for the last several years. As I mentioned, Ketchikan Indian Community has been collecting those samples at those beaches, and they're trained in the appropriate protocols. And then those bacteria are analyzed here in town at R and M right away. And so last year, in two thousand and twenty-one, we found that all of those beaches except for Sunset Beach and Seaport Beach exceeded recreation standards, you can slide through. And then all of them exceeded the harvest standards. And this is not unusual. We've been seeing this year after year where most, most or all of the beaches are exceeding water quality standards. And so we can, you can slide through again. We can take a look at some of the data. This figure just shows the concentrations that were observed on each date at all of the beaches. So along the bottom, we're seeing each date that was sampled, and then all of the concentrations at the different beaches. And this is the, for enterococci, right? So we can see them kind of bouncing along. Many of them are below the red dotted line, which is a water, a water quality criterion, and somewhere above. And then that August fourth date, we had really high concentrations up and down the coast. You can slide through. And I just wanted to point that out because that was after a really large rain event. I think there were about six inches of rain in the twenty-four hours before that sampling date. You can slide through. And this is the same, the same setup, but just for that other group of bacteria, the fecal coliform. And we are seeing a lot of concentrations above that water quality criteria. And again, that August fourth date had a lot of really, really high concentrations up and down the coast. And I, and when we see that, like after big runoff events and when concentrations are getting really high, it's just an indicator that there's probably bacteria coming in from the land to the beach. And that's not an uncommon thing for us to see here, where after big rain events, we'll see concentrations really bump up in the beaches. Are you going to slide through? And I know, you know, two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one were really different here without the cruise ships and the tourists. And I, I think there was a lot of interest to see what we would find with this bacteria with the cruise ships not in. So I just wanted to share a little bit of that with you here, and also look at kind of beach by beach, what's going on. And so this, right now, we see a geo mean, so kind of an average of concentrations at each of the beaches from this year. And we can see some beaches were trending, you know, trending to have higher concentrations than others. Kitzing Cove, Thomas Basin, Rotary Pool, Mountain Point Cultural Food, and Herring Cove were tending to have higher concentrations than some of the other locations. And that was, you know, that's kind of common from year to year, too. We can slide through. And then so now for each, each beach, you can see two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and two thousand and twenty-one geo means. So, and, and we were looking to see, like, are we going to see a big drop off, you know, in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one? And we really didn't find that. There was, you know, not a big trend in any direction. Some sites were up a little, some were down a little. And nothing, nothing really jumped out as a big change during those years in, in our data. You can scroll through the next one. And this is the same for the other group of bacteria. And I don't need to spend a lot of time on it, but just suffice to say that we didn't see trends and changes with, out the cruise ships here in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide? Oh, next slide. And so as I alluded to earlier, we're finding, you know, that some environmental conditions, the rain and weather can be helpful predictors of bacteria concentration, and also some ocean conditions. You can slide through, slide through. One more. Thank you. And so right now, D E C is working with a virtual beach model, which is, it's a multivariate model that can take in this environmental information, and it's trained with sample data to be able to predict concentrations of bacteria just based on environmental data. And so the, the hope with that is that this model can provide some information to the community about potential risk of contamination without the expense of sampling so frequently. It can just keeps going through until this slide's full. And so a lot of times when we talk to folks about this, you know, they really want to know, how do I know when there's a problem, when should I be at the beach, what can I do about this? And so we're really working with folks to sign those beaches when there are advisories. And so you might see a sign like this out if there is an active advisory at a beach. Also, D E C and K I C have Facebook posts with results, and all of the, all of the data is available on the D E C webpage to go back and look at. And there are just some basic precautions that can be taken, like bathing after exposure and washing and cooking fish fully. And then there are other some, you know, basic things to behaviors at the beach, like disposing of waste and litter so that birds aren't attracted to the area as much, and not leaving as much waste, and picking up dog waste, things like that can really, just on a personal level, help mitigate risk. So coming up this summer, sampling is going to be happening again at a subset of beaches, targeting some of those that were having more chronically higher concentrations. And that'll be every other week. And then we'll also be working with that model this summer to see, kind of like, fine tune that and make sure it's working really well for this community to be able to predict concentrations without sampling quite so frequently at that cost. And, yeah, this time. And so moving forward, you know, we, we saw these exceedances year, year after year at a lot of these beaches. And so now all of them are either listed or recommended to be listed as impaired water bodies in the State of Alaska's Integrated Water Quality Monitoring Assessment Report. And being listed as impaired doesn't have necessarily any regulatory or enforcement implications, but it does put a spotlight on those locations just for a little more scrutiny. And it also, you know, provides some opportunity in that it can elevate those sites as priorities for funding for projects that may address bacteria issues. And to that end, we've also put together an area-wide bacteria management plan that is available on the D E C website that pulls together all of the data, all the information, and also has identified some management and education strategies that may be used at these various locations and throughout the community to help address these bacteria issues. And so, you know, we have a lot of information about this and a lot of ideas about what might help. And really, the next thing I think that really needs to happen to move this forward is for a local stakeholder working group to formally get together and, and work together to pursue some of these education and management actions. And there's a really wide variety. I have a few examples up here, just even just some education campaigns about clean harbors and pump-out use and pet waste. There are quite a few just voluntary actions that can be taken, like flushing and dredging Rotary Pool, which seems to have some chronic issues, and the borough is working on that. And, you know, having really robust septic system inspection and upgrade program potentially. You know, upgrading charcoal point wastewater treatment facility, recognizing what a giant lift that would be. And, you know, and there are possible regulatory mechanisms that, you know, could be developed as well, like approval pump-out program for harbors, potentially implementing a D E C permit for common collectors that have outfalls to the marine environment. And so today, I'm just here, you know, to share all this information with you and just emphasize that this, there's no one finger to point about this problem. And, you know, this bacteria is coming from a lot of sources. And I think that cooperation and coordination with the city departments and staff and the borough, tribes, and private citizens that have a lot of great ideas is going to be really important for this effort to reduce bacteria concentrations in these beaches. So I just would like to bring this to you and ask that you encourage and facilitate appropriate city staff to have, you know, time and the go-ahead to work on these issues in, in a, in a stakeholder group setting with other entities as well. Because I think that'll be really important for being able to identify the best, the best solutions to this for this community. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to take questions for now or later.
Any questions from Mr. Belmar? Mr. Matani?
You know, it's been a misconception that cruise ships are the pollutants. Cruise ships are the one big culprit. And your presentation showed twenty and twenty-one, levels were the same. Are you going, have you, or are you going to do a study as these cruise ships come into our waters and see that, has there been a difference or will there be a difference? Have you compared the figures of two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty and twenty-one?
Yeah, I mean, we, there just hasn't been a, we haven't seen a huge drop within two thousand and twenty compared to any of the years. It's there, those water quality criteria are just being exceeded over and over again. And so, yeah, just, yeah.
Thank you.
We haven't, yeah, seen a drop from these years.
Other questions? Mr. Gass?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Couple of questions. You had mentioned that you guys have determined that the bacteria is coming from dogs, humans, and birds. Is there any way, or do you have any sort of an educated guess on the percentages? You know, is fifty percent of this coming from the birds? Is it ten percent? Is it ninety percent?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, so that genetic work is, is fairly expensive, and so it's done once a year. And so we have one sample from each year. And, and in short, no. We, it's really hard to turn those results into quantitative apportioning to those different sources just because of a lot of environmental interference with the DNA and things like that. And so that would be wonderful, but unfortunately, at this point, we can't really quantitatively portion those sources out. It's, it's more of like a presence-absence kind of assessment.
Thank you. Your Honor, may I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
I was just curious, I haven't thought about it, but are there any other coastal Alaska communities that do this type of research that you're aware of?
Yeah, the, the beach program has funded bacteria sampling at a lot of communities in Southeast. Kuna is also sampling this year. Petersburg and Bengal have also done it in Southeast. Kenai has had a lot of work done recently. Yeah, so Ketchikan's not the only one.
Are we kind of the worst or right in the middle, or?
You know, Gretchen, Gretchen from D E C is on, and she might have a better sense, worse than some. I'm not sure about Kenai. I know they have had a lot of trouble up there as well.
Yeah, if, if you, would you like me to just add on to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm Gretchen, Gretchen Agar. I work at D E C. And I've been doing this since the beginning. I've been on the beach program for many, many years. Basically, most of the places that we go to, we do not have these elevated levels. So, you know, Homer, Haynes, Douglas Island, Dillingham, you know, King Salmon, Knack Neck, all of those folk, they did their two years, didn't find a whole lot, didn't find actually hardly any exceedances. Ketchikan has more than, more than most. So that's why we've spent so much time sampling and trying to help protect the, the folks that use the beaches. But it's been several years now, and so we're trying to kind of work a different way, which is the, the EPA model, virtual beach. So the only two that are using that model right now is going to be Kenai River and Ketchikan because they're elevated levels.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Gage.
In speaking to that, what would be the, I think, at this point, that's, at some point, Ketchikan and the borough need to consider how we can eliminate or alleviate some of our waste. Are there grants out there for cleaning up some of our older septic systems and things like that, do you know? Or is that something that could be worked in with this plan? Or this plan could be used for?
Yeah, I, yeah, definitely. And I think, you know, with all this infrastructure money coming out right now, there may be some opportunities. I don't know of any specifically offhand right now. But definitely, like, having this, you know, having the problem documented, having the plan available, and all these solutions listed in the plan, that's something you can point to when you're applying for these grants and, and be, you know, elevated to higher priority for funding. So I think, you know, you're in a good position to get funding, yeah, for stuff like that.
So we're the two most highest features that are elevated compared to half the state.
At this point, but we, at this point, but there are three other locations that, that we're looking at in the, in the near future for the next couple of years. And they do have, we're seeing a little bit in their harbors as well. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. All right, item seven A three, parking constraints for residents, Park Avenue. The chair will entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council to take such action as determined appropriate regarding accommodating residential parking along Park Avenue corridor.
Been moved and seconded. Do we have a presentation for this from Chief?
Me, dear Your Honor.
Thank you.
Chief Walsh, come forward.
Hi, Chief Walsh.
Hey, good morning, council.
How you doing?
Thank y'all for having me.
Good morning to you, too.
Thank y'all for having me. Appreciate it. This was something that we have been working on because of, it's not just Park Avenue that we saw. There's other residential areas that we know will, will want this type of enforcement or a change in the parking regulations. We see this as a possible avenue for success with the city and this sort of. As you see, the, the, these were, these were actually, we came up with three possible solutions, not just for Park Avenue, but for the whole city, wherever there's parking restraints, where people are having issues with parking. We've had complaints about other areas as well. And so when we looked at it, we tried to find, not only for Park Avenue, but the entire city. If you look at our first proposal, was the first course of action that we would suggest is, this, this course of action, we just to maintain the status quo and make no changes to parking regulations. If you go to the next slide, so, yeah, appreciate it. So if you look at this, this is, of course, there's no, not an issue for the majority of the residents on Park Avenue. There's a select few that are really affected, and it's actually about twenty-four residents. And I'll go into that in a little bit. But if you're looking just at this particular area, all of Park Avenue isn't affected, but certain parts of it are. The possible oppositions to this is, there's a perception of a lack of regard for the issues with parking. It doesn't resolve the complaints from the public, and this issue also would most likely continue to grow as the, well, we have larger tourism and the population grows on the island, of course. There is an opportunity for revenue that we'll be missing. I said you would miss out on that. Again, these are other, other... Again, these are other, other neighborhoods have been complaining about similar issues with lack of parking. Should we go to the next slide? So for course of action two, we suggested that the city do, just to some of the residents that the city suggested. And that would make all of Park Avenue residential where parking only with one visitor pass available. Again, you'd have to require residential stickers that would change yearly, two proofs of residency, we should require that just to prove that they are resident there. Marketing any of these changes would be the biggest thing, I think that you'd see with that. If you can go to the next slide. You can see that this would give the residents of Park Avenue what they requested in this particular area. The possible opposition is, it's a residential area, we want same accommodations made for their area. So we would open it up for other residential areas and this turns public streets into private areas. It comes from public to private street, basically. To enforce this, it would exhaust the resources and it wouldn't benefit the funding coming from parking passes and towing expenses. We would have to create officers or create a position of 24 hours of seven days a week of vigilance to watch for parking violations as well. So we'd have to create, create that to monitor that. And again, unless assigned, there is a potential not to have enough parking, residents may result in additional complaints. So if we do limit this, we're going to run into the same issue about not having enough spots because there's 24 houses and nine spots available. And we require additional signs, painting, manufacturing, special parking stickers. So that was the second course action. And then the third course action, should we go to the next one, please? If you look at the third course of action, this is one we came up with, which limited the time we were talking about from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM residential only. From 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, all vehicles will be allowed to park in these areas. Again, no trailers, no RVs, that sort of thing goes. Other areas, Park Avenue, can be open to regular parking. We see that as a plus. The second course would be, the second part of this would be, allow residents to obtain parking stickers for one vehicle and any additional vehicle, we charge the same cost as a yearly parking pass. Two proofs of residency. The sticker will identify the vehicle as being a residential vehicle, allowing it to park in these areas. The color of the sticker will change year to year, every year. Each neighborhood, if we did expand this to other neighborhoods, each neighborhood would have their own particular color for their sticker and then that would change every year. Any business such as an apartment complex or even one of, you know, you have four complexes in one building, you know, they would have, can be given one pass, any additional needs would be at the cost of the city, that the city determines. So case of Catch Can Apartments, might be something where do they, to have a parking pass, what cost and go from there on that. The expand, the city expands the tolling agreement with Purdy's, tolling allowing them to tow any vehicle without a sticker visible, starting at 6:00 PM with a percentage of every tow going to the city. We already have an agreement with Purdy's and this would eliminate the need for an additional officer, additional parking enforcement agent, where they see the stickers, if there's no, if there's a vehicle parked in this area that's not a residential vehicle that can be towed and then that expense comes from the owner and then revenue, just revenue goes to the city. Again, no vehicle should be allowed to park on sidewalks and on bridges. Unfortunately, there is, laws are against this, just as was said in the complaints that, you know, we talked about earlier. There already are laws against this. The problem we run into is that at a certain point, we lose that parking enforcement agent and it falls back on police officers to enforce this and we get busy with other calls and other priorities. So by putting this back into allowing the tow companies to tow from these locations, it would help us as well. We already run into the problem, like every morning, I hear a call for service almost on Park Avenue about towing and moving or moving a vehicle that's parked on the bridge, just as they discussed. So I think this would, this would benefit as well, the department as well. Again, marketing these changes is through both social media and non-social media would be very important. Should we go to the next slide? So if you look at the strengths, this would give us definite, definitive hours for residential parking while still allowing public access to public streets during business hours. It's adding revenue from the toes. It frees up spots that maybe you overutilize parking spots with multiple vehicles. So we'll see, you'll see our residents with, that has three vehicles and they're taking up three spots, that kind of thing. It does not require additional manpower from the police department of the city. This course of action should, could be utilized throughout the city where residual parking is an issue. And so we didn't just look at it for Park Avenue, we looked at it as to combat issues throughout the city if it came with other parks where they're having parking issues. Oppositions, it would require additional signs, again, that's something, painting, manufacturing, special parking stickers, that's going to be offset rather, pretty much off the bat with the towing. It would be changed from a normal, you know, and that's the thing. Visitors will not be able to park in the designated residence parking areas. This could be adjusted to offer visitor parking passes. It's kind of one of those things. We talked about the two-hour parking, problem with the two-hour parking puts it back on us to go out and make sure that these vehicles are moving every two hours. And if you have, and if you do have a situation where you have a barbecue or a family event or something that, they're still going to have to move in two hours and for, it would require us to constantly be monitoring that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if it was every two hours that they had to move or something like that. That's also an issue I see with that, that part of it. Could you go to the next slide, please? So this, this basically just saying, we, we would suggest the course of action three. You can go to the next one and I'll, next slide and I'll talk about this. So I, I looked at this and, let's see if I, I don't know if y'all can see this. So it's not going to show up, but right in front of this area, there's, if you count the number of houses or residents compared to the parking spots, there's 25. And it looks like 25 and if you, according to this, this map, there's, and you'll have some of the complexes have four and three and then two, but you'll see 25 residents with 13, 13 spots. So that's a real problem there. You, you have more residents than you have parking spots in this area. Includes four off-street parking spots, that's garages, driveways. It does, does not include the Catch Can Apartment Complex. So this, this is an issue, you know, we realize that and I think that's the biggest thing is to do something. So if you go to the next slide, this just kind of shows you what we're looking at. This is Park Avenue and Harris and you see the off-street parking there and which, there's really not. And then you'll see, sometimes you'll see cars parked right there, you know, in that area where there's the garbage cans, they'll be moved and they're on the sidewalk, which is a problem. If you go to the next slide, garage, you see that, that's the, and you go to the next So you can see that this is the kind of off-street, this is, this is all the off-street parking they have in that area. The rest of it's on the street there. And you can go to the, the next slide, please. And then, again, that's just the driveway that's available for parking. And then the next one. This is the yellow zone on Park Avenue at Venetia Street. If you can see the, I, I pointed out more, but the, the yellow zone has been extended there. And we could cut some of the yellow zone out, maybe that's possibly another spot there that you could add a spot towards Venetia. Then you can go to the next slide. Venetia to Freeman, there's no parking. So from Venetia all the way to Freeman, there's no parking. Once you get to Freeman, it doubles up because you have, basically you have parking on both sides. You have some private parking on the right and then you have other parking, you have actual parking spots on, on the left side. Can you go to the next slide? That just kind of shows you that, once you get to past Freeman. Then you can go to the next slide. Then when you go to, then when you're dealing on the other side, on Harris, you see that going back on the Harris side, you see the off-street parking, that's what you mostly have, but you have a lot of, you can go to the next slide, please. You'll see no parking, private property and that's their private property and they can be towed, people can be towed if they park in those areas. Let's see, the next one, please. See the sign up there, no parking. And then this was, you can go to the next slide. This is something that we might want to think about, the old hospital parking lot. It could be possibly used as a parking lot. If you look, it's directly across from Park Avenue. I don't know if that's an option or not, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's another area that, you know, it could be multi-level parking, but I was trying to find other solutions for the community and what would come up. And if you go to the next one, it's just going to be questions. Any questions?
Questions for the chief, please. Mr. Gass?
Yes, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. One question I had on the number three option, point number four says, the city expands the towing agreement with Purdy's Towing, allowing them to tow any vehicle without a sticker visible, starting at 6:00 PM with a percentage of every tow going to the city. My question is, one, what is that percentage? And two, does that mean that basically, starting at 6:00 PM, Purdy's could basically go down there and just start looking and start towing people or would there have to be a complaint called in?
Well, it would be that they could just go out and start reviewing, looking for those stickers and then they'd have, they would, we would have to set some guidelines such as, they needed to take a photograph of the vehicle without the sticker, where to place that and then tow it at that point. And then, I don't know what the percentage, that would be kind of up to y'all to know what the percentage is, which I worked out with, I believe right now it's a tax on it. Right now is what the percentage is on.
Ms. Kistler?
Thank you.
I'm just wondering if we don't choose any of these parking options, can we do a toll away zone on the bridge anyway?
Well, we, we do have, yeah, we could, we could do something similar with that. We could, we could just get with Purdy's and say that those vehicles, any vehicle that's on that thing that they could have the right to, to tow, that could be, that could be done.
I actually have a question.
Yes?
25 residences, 13 parking spaces, four of those are off-street. So if you issue passes to all the residences, is it going to be like a, what happens to the other guy, you know, if there's not enough spaces, what happens after the nine street side are taken? Where do the other people with the parking passes go?
It's got to be first call, first served.
Okay.
Unless we can just come up with a solution for, that was why I suggested that, the hospital area.
Gotcha. Okay. Other question, it's Councilmember Bradbury.
Have we approached the owners of that side lot that surrounds, that's across from Catch Can Apartments? It might be time for the city to look at potentially making an offer on that property and possibly building more parking because I definitely think Harris Street, Park Avenue and up on, what is the main street? Grant, there you go. Grant Street, you know, there are a lot of parking battles, as I call them, people racing for parking spots and so forth over there. So I just don't know if, where that land lies, I know it's in private ownership, I don't know if they're entertaining any idea of possibly letting somebody purchase it or not.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you, Chief, very much. Good night. Don't leave yet. All right, council, what do you think?
Your Honor?
Mr. Gass?
Just a clarification first, I was, I wanted to make sure we're all understanding because I'm not quite understanding. Under the motion that was made at the start of this by Mr. Matani, basically that's stating that at the end of this, one of us is going to have to make a more specific motion with what I, action to take, is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Could I share my thoughts?
No.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes. So the chief touched on exactly what, what I was thinking, which is the old hospital lot. I know that there are a lot of possible future plans and ideas for what to do with that. I know something that we have discussed at length is, in the future, donating it to Wish if they get a grant to build a facility there. Other folks would like to see it auctioned off for maybe some private development, but I think no matter what we do, at least for this summer, I, I frankly don't think that whatever happens there is going to be happening within the next couple of months. So given that, as Mr. Hilson stated when we were discussing this before with the tourist drop-off at Discovery Center, the front half of that lot is pretty flat, it would not take a whole lot of work. You know, I don't mean to oversimplify it, but I think if we remove the fencing, might take a couple loads of D1 to really smooth it out in there, put in 16 temporary parking, you know, just the yellow parking stops with some stakes and then if the time comes where we want to do something else there, quite literally, all we would have to do is pull the stakes up and remove the 16 spots, but for now, it would be a huge relief for that area. So I really think that's the direction I'd like to go, but I'm curious what everyone else thinks.
Okay. Councilmember Kistler?
Didn't he say it was like a hundred thousand to do that?
To develop the autumn stream property? I don't recall what it is. I mean, it's, it's, it has an expense to it and I don't remember the exact number of spaces that it would yield. I don't think it's 16, I think it was more like eight. We can, we can revisit that if that's council direction.
Other, Councilmember Bradbury?
Fair with me. Let's see, I would like to move, move forward with doing a temporary trial of course of action number three. I think in the, in the information, it said a roughly 60 days was needed to see if it would work or not. At this point, I think it's worth a try, 60 days, see if it works for the residents, see if it helps the issues in that area. And if not, then come back to the table in 60 days after the evaluation and think of a different solution. This might not be something that we achieve right off the bat with number one. It might take some evolution of this project. I would also support Councilmember Gass's suggestion of temporarily using that hospital lot until development is slated or funding for development is found and secured. It is currently just sitting empty. Yes, it might cost a little bit of money, but this is an issue that I know I've heard of for a while since I've been here. I think it'd be worth putting that investment into that area, knowing that we probably could get a year worth of parking out of that and to help alleviate and help also give us some time to think of a grander parking scheme if this 60 days proves that it, it's not working. So it's my suggestion.
Councilmember Zingy?
I would agree with Councilmember Bradbury for the course of action number three. I don't disagree with Councilmember Gass, but I think I'd want to know the cost because we always say, oh, you know, it's not going to cost that much money and then we find out it's going to cost a whole hell of a lot of money, I mean, a lot of money. So I think I'd want to know the cost of that first.
I believe the acting city manager may have that at hand.
I, I, to your honor, this is based off of the work that was done for research for the Discovery Center location for the work of the shuttle bus operation. So in looking at that proposal, that would yield 12 spaces, including one accessible parking spot and the cost for that was a little over $23,000 to do that work.
Twenty-three thousand?
Genali, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Genali, then Riley.
I think it would be worth having that conversation with the community that lives in that area. Maybe they get together and... Um, here, maybe they get together and.
Speak up, please, Genley.
But I, I don't know. I guess my thi- my question would be, why, why would it be thirty-three thousand to let people just randomly park at a parking lot? I don't know. Anyway, um, but I think it's worth having a conversation with the community itself to see what they have to say too, because they may have an idea.
Mr. Gass, then Ms. Kissler.
So, uh, one of the reasons I like this idea was because it was presented so well by Mr. Hilson a month or so, or however many months ago that was now. And, uh, you know, I'm pretty familiar with that lot. I've been kind of, uh, obsessed with it for quite some time, because frankly, I think there's all kinds of stuff that could be done there. And, uh, I just wanted to clarify at least my idea. I don't know what the twenty-three thousand was based on, but certainly if we're looking at a temporary one-to-two-year situation, I thi- I definitely don't think we need to pave it. Um, and it's, like I say, that the back half, as Mr. Hilson explained a few months ago, is, is much steeper and rockier. But ba- basically, the front half or sixty percent of that is darn near flat. And so, what I think would be the best option is just to, as I said, bring in a little D1 and smooth things out. I mean, I'm not an expert, but I've done a little bit of dirt work and a, a few loads of D1, I think is all you'd need there. Smooth it out, compact it, and put the parking spots in. You know, if you have those yellow parking stops, I don't even think you need lines, quite frankly. Um, so for a temporary thing, I just, I think we can do a little better than twenty-three thousand in that area.
Ms. Kissler.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, that we should not be making a decision about what happens on Park Avenue, that the people that live there should be making the decision. So, I, I think it should go to them before anything's done. Representative of that area.
Councilmember Zingy.
I guess the one question I have is, weren't they, were they consulted? I mean, I think that, didn't they all come together with the chief to come up with these three options?
Never. No, no.
No?
We were never asked about anything about parking over the years, ever.
Have any of you folks that live there taken the time? This, this was published with the agenda to study the three options. Have you any preliminary conclusions? Ms. O'Brien, please come up.
So, um, certainly I'm, I'm not the spokesperson, the spokesperson or the official spokesperson for our neighborhood. I just happen to be the neighborhood loudmouth. However, uh, with that being said, uh, the neighbors have talked frequently, as we do a lot. Uh, I think that option three, trying it for sixty days, might work well. Uh, and then having a continuing conversation with the neighborhood. One thing that is glaring to me at this point is I want to emphasize, the problem on Park Avenue, and I, if you look at the chief's maps about the number of available parking spots versus actual housing, is the Ketchikan Apartments. They are not zoned in the Park Avenue Parking District. So if you think about that, according to the borough, they actually have no right to park there if you are going to regulate parking. So if you're thinking about using the hospital parking lot, which would then be in the cor- central commercial district, that would be an appropriate use for that facility. Um, I think that, uh, you know, many of our residents in our neighborhood, um, I actually, yeah, right there, has a parking spot at the American Legion. There are five or six spots there right now that are paid for thirty dollars a month. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clarification. And I definitely agree, a community conversation would be very valuable moving forward. But right now, it is an immediate problem. And I would invite my other neighbors to come forward if.
You would be fine with giving option three a try to, to get, to get the ball?
I would, but again, I'm not an elected spokesperson.
I understand, but I'm just asking, but I'm asking you.
And I really don't want my house to be egged tonight, so.
Anybody else from Park Avenue who wanna speak to this?
You know, I think I actually like the idea of opening up the old hospital parking lot first and then trying maybe a permit parking situation on top of that. One, you're gonna have to print these permit, these stickers. So that's not gonna be like an immediate thing anyway. And it really, i- it is like Michelle says, it's Ketchikan Apartments is putting pressure on that neighborhood to have four or five cars come and go, uh, through the day. That, if they had that option to park over at the hospital, which makes sense, then, uh, or the old hospital, it would alleviate pressure on our neighborhood immediately.
Okay, thank you. So, listening to the comments from the community and the council, it seems like the course of action that's gonna be preferred is option number three. Look into opening up that hospital lot. But I wanna speak to that for a second, because we have a future agenda item on the disposition of that lot. It's my agenda item, and when I put that on there, I made it very clear, that's an opportunity for anybody, regardless of projected use, to come and speak about their interest or their desire or what they think might be best. So understand that if that lot is used as parking, it's temporary for an indeterminate amount of time, and then you're right back to twenty-five residences and thirteen spaces, and you're gonna have to look for a future solution. But this seems to be a good start. So does that encapsulate the will of what the council wants to do? And is that clear to staff?
Um, your honor.
Yes, Mr. Gass.
I was, I, I would like to make a motion on that. So I would like to move to temporarily turn the front half of the old hospital lot on Boden Street into a temporary gravel parking area, as was previously suggested under the prior plan for accommodating Ward Cove shuttles for the Discovery Center.
Do you want option three to also be part of your motion?
With the inclusion of option three for the sixty-day trial, yes.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
It moved in second, is there any other discussion? Mr. Matani.
I'd like to make an amendment to that. I'd like to make an amendment that the hospital, front end of the hospital lot specifically be temporary in the wording. That the hospital parking lot will be used as parking temporarily till we find a permanent solution. Because, as you said, your honor, you have an agenda item coming to discuss what we are going to do with that lot in the future.
Just to clarify, I did say temporarily twice in there.
So does that, are you, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied with that, yeah.
Okay, then we'll, we'll withdraw the amendment and we're back to the main motion. It's been moved in second, is there any other discussion? Madam clerk, can we please, please call a roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gass?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seven eighty-four, request to accommodate Ward Cove shuttle operations on the Port of Ketchikan, Ward Cove Dock Group.
Your honor.
Mr. Matani.
I'd like to, on advice of the attorney, through the city manager, I'd like to, uh, recuse myself on discussion or voting on this issue because of my interest in the business on berth two. This was the advice given to us through the attorney, through the city manager.
Accepted, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Matani will not be taking part in this discussion, so, please, who wants to start?
Your honor.
Ms. Kissler.
I move the city council to direct the Acton City Manager to take such action regarding the request to accommodate the Ward Cove shuttle operation and associated expenses during the two thousand twenty-two cruise season as determined appropriate by the city council.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion.
Your honor.
Ms. Kissler.
I wanna make sure that if we put Ward Cove buses on our dock, that we don't just break even. We need to, uh, put a bonus on top of the bro- break-even mark because we have no business accommodating business at another dock. A good business person would never do that. It doesn't make sense. I also think that they should continue to use the berth four as a staging area. They could drop people off there or allow them to move forward to the berth two or three spaces when they are available. There's no reason for them to necessarily bypass Newtown. They get off at Newtown, that's a straight shot, right through the tunnel. They get to hoop and holler through the tunnel and have fun and say they did that in Ketchikan and move on through town, all the way through, hit everything on their way to Creek Street. Maybe when they come back, they can catch a shuttle that's closer and not have to walk there. Yes, there are going to be some people that have difficulty walking. So does that mean we're not gonna put any cruise ships on berth four? Because that would be unfair to the entire cruise ship. So, you know, who are we fair to? Are we fair to our paying customers? Who are paying to be at our dock? Are we gonna crowd our dock and make their experience less because of the crowding at the dock? When there's nobody there, come on over. Um, but I, I would limit it. I, I, I don't think that we should be kowtowing to these people that made the choice to park out there. We're hurting. We're hurting for certain. There's no reason for us to give benefits to those people that are hurting us. They're hurting us. Now, people downtown are hurting too. I understand that totally. That's why, yes, I can see moving some buses further on. But I don't see any reason why Newtown businesses have to suffer because everybody downtown wants everybody to. Ev- everybody wants the business. Don't blame ya. If I had a business on that side or that side, you know, I'd be up there saying the same thing. I mean, we gotta do something about those hawkers. I think I'm gonna put a down jacket on.
That's a different topic. And before there's other council comments, I've been remiss. I would like to ask the port director to come up and please speak to this and tell us what you think. I'm sorry that I didn't do that first, but I couldn't see you there. Thanks, Darrell.
Good evening, my name is Mayor, city council members, Darrell Verfie, Port Harpers. So, uh, I was tasked by the city manager to come up with a plan, if and when you chose to allow that operation. And so, um, I just wanna make clear that plan doesn't endorse that proposal. It just, it supports the proposal if it's accepted. And so, uh, I've worked with our port operations coordinator and, and the staff, and, um, yeah, we certainly can make it happen. So, uh, if you see in that tentative plan, I mean, it is a scalable plan and, and it's a flexible plan. So, that is the key to that plan. And so, we leave it up to the port operations coordinator to flex that, as allowed, and we start with a certain amount of buses. And then we grow from there or we don't. But, uh, that's the flexible part, and we have to see if it works. Because really, no plan works until you try it. It's from, never survives that first contact. And so, that's the point of that plan, so, um, that's how it came about.
Questions for the port director? Start there. Anybody? Councilmember Bradbury.
Um, so, it was my impression as last year is having the buses, um, used dock one was a trial. That was the whole point of why we gave it for free. Um, for them to, for us to try to see logistically, um, how, how it works. Um, it worked last year. Um, it was, it was very organized compared to what we have now. Um, it's been tried, it's been tested. I think that where it kinda got a little crazy was the number of buses that, um, was being thrown out there before we, we had a realization of how many buses and drivers we actually have in this town. And I think the, the number of shuttles that they're operating now, um, I think it would be a little bit more manageable on, on the pier. Um, when you talk about limiting, uh, buses, are you just limiting just the Ward Cove buses? Or are you limiting all buses that are gonna be on board?
Ward Cove.
Just, just the Ward Coves, okay.
Right, and it, and the plan specified a special permit so we could, because that's a, that's a separate issue on the port access passes. But technically, they don't have the right to be on the port with the port access we have. So they'd be identifiable to our port security personnel. And that's why I'd like to start small, because we're managing all the other buses, plus keeping an eye on the, on the, the Ward Cove buses. And the plan also, critical piece of the plan is that Ward Cove personnel are on the dock to assist us with, as we implement the plan. And then there's a dry run in there as well, which I would insist on. Um, and, you know, we work out the dates with Ward Cove and our port operations coordinator and run with passengers but limited, so we can work out some of the things ahead of time.
Other questions for the port director? Councilmember Gage. Genley?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just gathering my words here. There's, um, I have a few issues with this. Um, one, um, as they're moving, I understand people at the berth two and downtown want the business, but I also know that we have, uh, community members on the Newtown area, new businesses and people, uh, struggling too on that end, who are, um, being disenfranchised because, uh, we're moving people and we took away business from them when we inadvertently gave them the dock on the days that we did. The question I g- I guess, you know, they, they chose not to work with us. Um, I haven't, I'm sorry, but the wishy-washiness of the behavior of the organization, that's, um, that's on them, that's not on us. And the, um, the fact that they didn't wanna pay after all the work that our workers, our city, um, um, workers put into the, the plan to make it work for them at the Discovery Center, and the fact that this idea that we're somehow as a community responsible for paying for their business practices, for them to do business in our community. I get it. I get it, I know that, um, every business in town needs this business. But at the same time, when do we stop? When do we stop bending over for these people and thinking? Because they're a multi-billion dollar industry. They're a multi-billion dollar industry who impacts our infrastructure on a daily basis. On a monthly basis, they're here five months, six months out of the year, and we're the ones that have to kowtow to them? No. I, I'm so sick of this conversation. One, their responsibility at berth four, that's private business. We're not gonna get sued when they screw up. They are. But here's my other issue. We move them to berth two and we take away business from our local shops. People who are born and raised here, people who have been struggling to make ends meet at that end of town and give it to the other end of town. And, and, um, I know that a lot of the businesses in, on the, oh, down there, berth two, have been there forever. I get that too. But at some point, they have us fighting with each other over scraps. And that is not fair, that's not right. And at some point, this community has to start to realize that we all count, not just the few of us, not one, not ten, not four of you, all of us, the whole community. Those, the people who don't have shops, those people. Those, the people who don't have shops, those people who do have shops and those people on the other side of the tunnel that nobody get, seems to give a rat's butt about. Now, maybe the buses need to be split up. And as a disabled individual, the, nobody accommodates me when I go travel. I have to figure it out myself. I have to rent a scooter. I have to figure out what I can do on my own two feet. And I can tell you this, I can walk from berth four all the way downtown and back. Not everyone can do that, I get that. But most people, when they're traveling and they have a disability or they have limitations, they make arrangements. They do that. We, we, as people with a disability, we do that. We know people aren't going to accommodate us. Uh, you know, it's just, it's almost offensive when people say, oh, we gotta accom-. You know, maybe accommodate the people in the community first before you start accommodating for people that aren't in the community, that come to visit. Because most people who travel and with, with disabilities, like I, I'm, I'm traveling right now. I had to rent a scooter. I haven't rented a scooter in my entire lifetime. But I'm doing it because I want to see New Orleans. That's all I got, Your Honor.
Okay. I got a couple of questions. You've looked at the Ward Cove plan. What do you think as far as distribution? For example, we got some, they have, they show some ships staying at berth four, not until the 12th of June. To Councilmember Gage's point, she's right. The most important business is the one you own. Really doesn't matter what side of the tunnel you're on, okay? So when they talk about number of gangways, dates, how does that jive with your plan? Do you see it differently? Should it be when there's no ship at all? Or how, would, how would you modify their plan if you would?
That, that's a good point. So thanks. So what we did is basically we took their plan, we looked at their plan and then we said, okay, that's great. But here's our plan to start the plan. And I know that's kind of confusing, but it, there's a lot, there's so many variables and moving parts that we decided just, okay, we, maybe we can work into, you know, day by day and case by case. But at this point in time, we don't even have all our staff.
See if we can grow into it.
Right. And so, so grow into it, that's part of the scalable piece. And then we'll, that's why, you know, otherwise, you know, then you got to check and say, well, these days there's two ships at Ward Cove. These days there's one ship at Ward Cove. And then the schedule goes back and forth and back and forth. And we don't even have all our folks onboard till June 5th and trained, which is the date we, we proposed to start this with. And so, yeah, it's scalable to grow into that plan if I, if I answer to you.
And modify it as you see fit.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Then I got a couple of comments. Got contacted by a lot of people downtown wanting this for free. I'm not going to support that, not a chance. Okay? We've just had a bunch of speakers come to this microphone tonight talking about revenue. The community needs revenue too. The port needs revenue. Year-end reserves at the port, maybe if traffic picks up, about eight and a half million dollars. Outside funding that we've placed into the port fund this year, eight point three million dollars. So we're broke. At the end of the year, without outside funding, we're broke. This is not sustainable, okay? And I'm hoping this is the last time I have to have this conversation with downtown merchants. Sales tax is not a revenue of the port. It goes to the general fund. The port is its own separate fund. And even if those funds could be commingled, if you had a store and you sell a variety of things, you don't sell your T-shirts to break even, but don't worry about it. I'll make it up on hats. Nobody operates a business this way. It's called the Port Enterprise Fund for a reason. And we really need to treat it that way as a community. It's not punitive to the businesses. What's punitive to the businesses is $20 million in cathodic protection that, let me ask the city manager, what's your plan today to pay for that?
Your Honor, we do not have a plan.
Correct. Okay? So when we're talking about revenue, understand that the community has a need to keep that port sustainable. And asking for these things for free is really not a viable option. You have your hand up, sir. What would you like to say?
The bus problem in itself. They're bringing them 30 minutes to town, dumping them over berth four and then telling them that there's a free shuttle 50 feet away. And if you, any of you council members have been on berth four and seen it happen, there's a thousand people standing there waiting on the free shuttle. My suggestion is give our locals their free passes, charge Ward Cove 50 cents a head for that bus because we need revenue. They're using our buses, they're wearing our city bus out now. And there's only one running most of the time, 20 minutes around. And you're wearing that bus out and we're not going to be able to pay for it. So I think we need to look at that too, putting, putting the cost back on Ward Cove for your bus, the bus travel, because they're just dumping them off and telling them, here's another bus. A lot of those patrons are getting upset because they just rode a bus for 30 minutes. And we tell them, it's a five minute walk to downtown if you follow the promenade. Or you can wait here for 10 minutes for the bus, which they do. So we can recoup some money from that too.
Okay, thanks. This is the second time the Ward Cove group has approached the community for the use of downtown. There's value to that. Okay? I'm not sure what the margin should be, but doing this at cost would be absurd. And there's no, there's really no discussion to be had that makes any sense to the community to go in that direction. So when we get to the end of this discussion and provide direction, we'll, we'll see where this goes. But my vote's going to be that there should be, there should be a respectable, healthy business margin like anybody would do downtown on any other product that they're furnishing. Who else?
Your Honor.
Mr. Gas?
So I've got quite a bit of comments and I have to say I've, uh, I've gone back and forth on this issue many times. I jotted down some notes, but basically when you look at the substance of what we're talking about, both sides have great points. The folks at berth four area, that side of town, Newtown, or whatever you want to call it, they say, hey, look, we're, we're more local businesses. There are some new businesses. We're trying to encourage growth and development in this part of town. So this is a great opportunity with more business. Uh, it will help expand and kind of, uh, draw out the business so it's not so congested. And, uh, they have, they have very valid points. The folks on the other end of town also have very valid points. I, I acknowledge the fact that the, there are more tourists and cruise ships going to berth three and four than one and two. So that's a fair point. I would say they are correct in saying that there are more businesses down there. Uh, so that should be taken into consideration. But quite frankly, when I, I've, I've thought about this and I don't think it's our job as the local government to pick and choose a winner. And when I say that, I mean, I don't think we should just arbitrarily decide we're going to help out that group of folks and screw that group of folks or vice versa. So while both sides have practically equally uh, good points, I think what it comes down to is what were we, the council, elected to do? And that was to represent the best interests of all the citizens of Ketchikan. That includes the north end businesses, the downtown businesses and people without businesses, as was said. So thinking about it from that point, I think the best move for us, like, kind of similar to, as you said, Mr. Flora, is, you know, I'm not opposed to their option of going down to berth two. I think that would probably be a better option. But at the end of the day, we, we offered them a very sensible, very reasonable offer a few months ago. And we sat at the table 10 months ago and said, we better figure out a plan with what we're going to do on this issue months in advance. To the credit of the staff and the council and everyone else, we did that. The staff made a great plan that was going to be a, a really good compromise for everybody. It was going to distribute people in two different areas. And what did we ask for? We asked for them to simply fund the cost of the development of the drop-off facility and the annual cost of port security and cleaning the garbage cans and that sort of thing. I don't think that was an unfair request. Ward Cove made the business decision that it was not worth that cost, so they took their business elsewhere. Quite frankly, that's on them. So I would be willing to accept this, uh, berth two, berth three drop-off, but as has been stated before, not without a cost. And to be, to be honest, I wrote up a, uh, uh, a, or a resolution here that I was, or a amendment that I was thinking about bringing forward that basically would say direct staff to go forward with this at the cost of $71,017, which would cover the costs that staff said it would cost the city for the security and, and the personnel costs. But I think you guys raise a good point. I mean, I, I don't think we're in the business of breaking even. And if they're going to benefit from our port, which has millions of dollars worth of, uh, maintenance to be done and we don't have the money to do it, I think the proper business decision is to ask for a little extra to chip in on that. So I'm probably going to disregard this motion I had written here for 71,000. But, but the final point is, as the mayor said, uh, they've come back to us twice now. So the interest is there. I think we could, I don't know, I'd like to hear more from other members. But I think we can come up with a reasonable, business sensible, uh, offer to, to tell Ward Cove, yeah, we'll do it, but here's the price. So I guess my thoughts would be now we ought to decide what that should be and what's a fair cost. Because I, if I understand, it seems like the rest of the council more or less agrees with that.
Right. I believe you're, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Kessler.
Oh, 50% markup, right?
I'm not sure, that, that's one of those things that could get into the weeds is the, the exact price. So before we get there, I would ask this body if it not necessarily vote, but can we at least see enough hands that we agree it should be if we do this? And to your point, Mr. Gas, looking at the Ward Cove plan, there would be buses going to four, there would be buses going to the dock. And the city could also gain some revenue. That's probably about as equitable a spread as we can expect. So I'd like to know, what do you guys think as far as, where do we want to be? Free, cost, or we want to act like an enterprise? Let's start there before we worry about what the price tag is.
Enterprise.
Enterprise.
I've had my hand up a couple of times. I just haven't gotten called, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I won't let me throw that Gatorade bottle at my head. Please, fill us in.
So obviously I, I am full support of them. Not fully moving down to two and three because they will call to berth four as well. There's two major reasons why I support this one. The safety hazard of, um, berth four. It's, it hasn't necessarily improved with passengers. I watched two almost get hit again today. Um, they happened to be on the crosswalk. But that's here near, I mean, it's, it's just a safety nightmare. Second reason is the cruise ship distribution is not being upheld to our ordinance with the changes. Uh, we, in the ordinance, it does say it needs to be 25% across all four docks. Um, it has not been recalculated since all of the cancellations.
Excuse me for a moment. That's not correct. It's 25 and 75. It's not 25 on each one. We're within 5%. Now, just a quick aside, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just a quick aside. That's a different topic, okay? The cruise ship schedule is controlled by CLAA. And I got a lot of complaints about that. And quite frankly, I got to tell you folks, we're, the city's not doing it and everybody that wanted the status quo, that's what you got. You got what you asked for. It's not the city council's fault or staff's fault that the cruise lines' schedules are blowing up on a daily basis.
Point of order. I was in the middle of my statement.
I'm actually going to finish.
Point of order. Point of order, it must be recognized.
So noted. It's not, it's not the topic for the, the cruise ship schedules are not the topic that we're discussing tonight. It's a separate topic. We're talking about whether we're going to.
Other people weren't stopped to talk about other things besides bus shuttles.
Go on, go, go on.
I'm just saying it's a little unfair if you're not going to uphold everyone to that same standard.
Good enough. Go on.
So I was just saying the distribution has been messed up with the, uh, change of the schedule. So shifting people and utilizing all three ports would help equalize the passengers in town. Um, I think that's fair and is, sorry, just kind of baffled. Um, I do think there needs to be a cost with it. There is cost that goes into an operation. Not only is it staff's physical time actively on the pier, there is a lot of logistics that go into it off of the pier, which does, I mean, it's people's time, it's staff's time. So that does cost. So I definitely think we need to look at what is that cost outside of the port as well, um, to get a full sense of what, what that cost should, should be. So I'm definitely in full support of that, um, and moving forward with, um, the plan of spreading them out between berth two, three and berth four.
Thank you. Other comments?
Your Honor.
Mr. Gas?
Well, I have a, uh, two things. I know we're all very passionate here, but that was very inappropriate. I don't think we should be cutting people off until they're done speaking. That's my opinion. As far as this issue goes, uh, what about, I mean, we're all kind of floating ideas on the same kind of thought process here. So I would suggest that we go forward with directing staff to present Ward Cove with a bill of uh, $91,017. That covers the $71,000 cost for the, uh, personnel and overtime charges as outlined by staff. And then quite frankly, that's 20,000 that could be, uh, aimed at maintenance. And I would say the biggest cost is the man-hours that our highly trained and, uh, professional staff has put in going round and round on this. I think that's a reasonable charge. I don't know what the hour-dollar amount has been on this, but I suspect it's pretty significant. So what do you guys think about that?
I'm unclear. How do you arrive at that figure?
Uh, well, I haven't heard, uh, a more, I haven't heard a specific figure named yet. I've heard, I think a majority of us suggest that we ought to charge the cost plus some. And I haven't, uh, I haven't heard any other, uh, specific suggestions. So I just worry that if we go round and round with this, I worry that we leave this topic without clear direction. So.
Your Honor.
I think, uh, the 20,000 is a reasonable amount. It's not a ton, but it does show that, look, we're not going to give freebies. And the explanation could be for maintenance and, uh, man-hours that have gone into this topic.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gage?
Uh, can we have, shouldn't we have Lacy like work something up to see what this would look like? I mean, I get what you're saying, Gas. I just think that maybe we should just have them draw that up and figure out the numbers.
Do you want to respond to that?
Sure, Your Honor. So the cost that was estimated for actual personnel expenditures and some fairly nominal supplies is about $72,000. So anything above and beyond that, um, should theoretically be, um, revenue to the port. Uh, the council can certainly pick an arbitrary number like Councilor Bast did, $20,000. Or you could apply a percentage to that as, as a markup, as a, um, percentage of, of profit. It's really a policy decision, um, for the council. So we've identified the actual costs. Anything above and beyond that is before the city council.
Question for the port director. Was this about 38,000 people that were going to come through this program? Is, is that right?
It was. Uh, I'm trying to recall.
Is that, am I close on that one?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Because it was, it was 50% of 70%. Right?
We use my 50% markup. That's three bucks ahead.
38,336 passengers is what was noted in here.
What does the council think about $3 ahead based on 38,000? What does the council think about three dollars a head based on thirty-eight thousand people?
I think that's about what I said with fifty percent markup.
I think you're right. Were you guys, are you WebEx folks, could you hear that?
I heard it.
Yes.
What, what do you think?
That works for me.
So, that comes in at, so thirty-eight thousand times three on top of the seventy-one thousand, is that what you're suggesting?
No, 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 as...
Total?
Total.
Oh, okay. That's fair. I'm, I support that.
It's like a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Hundred and fifteen thousand eight, one-one-five-zero-zero-eight.
You just got to correct everybody.
Well, we're about to make a motion.
Well, then I'm going to make a motion.
There is a motion on the floor.
Right, sorry.
So, are you giving direction, you guys are going to vote on...
We have to amend it? How do we, how do we do this?
Yeah, you can amend it. Just trying to make sure we understand. There's a motion on the floor that you're giving direction.
That we're giving direction, okay.
So, do you want to say what your direction is and then...
Yes, I'm going to, I'm, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
I was just going to say, I just want to make it clear that number was based on an estimate. That's not the lower berth count. That was based on an average of seventy percent of the ship's fill, not the lower berth counts. That was a lower number based on the averages that we were going to have fifty percent in the beginning and ninety percent towards the end. So, we had to pick a number that was reasonable, so it's all based on seventy percent. So, just to make sure that, that is not the lower berth count, that number is...
Okay, but, but, but we know regardless, our costs are seventy-eight thousand, okay. Okay. Then, I'm going to suggest direction to staff would be three dollars a head based on thirty-eight thousand, but regardless of head count, the price not to be no less than one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Your Honor, the manager?
Um, yes.
So, just point of clarification, so is the council in, in seeking remuneration for this operation, are you wanting it to be adjustable based on actual passengers that come to town or that disembark at Ward Cove versus a, a flat rate? I would advocate for a flat rate.
Flat rate is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To, in order to avoid the administrative nightmare and trying to keep track and traffic style, who exactly is coming, when, all of that, I would, I would pick that.
No, no, much, no, 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 much better way to go. I would like to throw away that, you're, you're right. I'm going to suggest a flat fee of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bradbury?
A question.
Yes.
Um, how will this be expected to be paid? Would this be like broken up into five months, or would it be one, one fee at the end of the year, season? Um, how, how is payment of this going to be expected?
The finance director suggested, I agree, that this is, um, billed in advance. So, this is, this is a service that we're offering for the duration of the season under these, these terms and this understanding, and so it would be asked for upfront.
Same as the dock vendors?
It seems like, yeah, what do you think? That, that sounds like a good idea.
I was going to go fifty percent upfront, fifty percent mid-season. It's just, that's just a habit I have in, in operations, so...
If, if you're thinking you would want to renegotiate or up the fee, then, but otherwise, you know, we're going to have to staff personnel and have the service and make the plans for, um, our purposes. So, I would, I would have the fee due upfront, um, but if you think that it would be adjustable at some point in the season and you'd charge more or would want to charge more, I mean, you could certainly do first half of the season and then opt for a higher fee, but I don't know if, if that's something that...
Upfront seems cleaner and offers the greatest protection to the community. So, what do other council...
Agreed.
You, what do you think? I see generally...
I agree. I, I think that they're, they're a multi-billion dollar industry, I think they can pay it upfront.
Mr. Gass?
That way they can't weasel out.
I agree, I just, we, we kind of got a little off the rails, so I think you made the motion and it was seconded for a hundred and fifteen thousand. So, I don't know if the motion should be remade, just to clarify, but if we're, uh, in agreement that we want to vote on charging Ward Cove a hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, with a upfront fee in full, then let's...
Yes, that's the, yes, sir, that's the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, uh...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm ready to vote.
Call the roll, please.
Gass?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kistler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Seventy-five, resolution number twenty-two twenty-eight fifty, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real, excuse me, uh, yes?
Didn't we just vote on the amendment but not the actual motion itself?
Because the motion on the floor was to give direction. And so, the direction was to give the hundred and fifteen, so...
Just trying to clarify for her here.
Resolution number twenty-two twenty-eight fifty, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business property in the city for the year twenty-twenty-two, providing for the collection of taxes due in twenty-twenty-two, prescribing penalties and interest for delinquent taxes. General, I have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council approves resolution twenty-two dash twenty-eight fifty, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real business, personal property in the city for the year twenty-twenty-two, providing for the collection of taxes due in twenty-twenty-two, prescribing penalties and interest for delinquent taxes, and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Gass?
All right, I'm going to ask for forgiveness in advance for my lengthy comments here, but, uh, this is something that has been, I've been very passionate about this entire year. It was a main focus of mine was to do anything in our, uh, capability to avoid raising this tax on our citizens, and so I'm going to make my, uh, my best argument to my fellow council members in hopes that maybe they'll see it from my point of view and possibly agree. Uh, a few just kind of, uh, opinion things, I guess, would be that raising property tax on our citizens will add even more to the already very high cost of owning a home or renting a home, as landlords will likely pass on the cost to their tenants. There have been several areas where the city has seen additional savings from this proposed twenty-twenty-two budget, including several of our higher-paid positions in the city that were not filled until very recently, and some that are still not filled, including the highest-paid position of manager. Very importantly, to point out, uh, multiple positions that were included in the budget proposal to be, uh, unfrozen, we continued to freeze three positions, I believe it was. So, that in itself is another substantial, uh, savings. Uh, during the budget deliberations, we went through every single detail of the budget with a fine-tooth comb, searching for every area where we thought we could find any cuts that were appropriate, and we cut the amount needed roughly to prevent this increase. Uh, that in itself is more than enough reason to vote this down. Uh, two meetings ago, we received a presentation, or, uh, we received information that so far this year, our budget was in better shape than was predicted, uh, during the budget time, and that was before we made cuts. We have collected, it was reported at that time, two meetings ago, that we had collected more taxes than was predicted. Uh, it was also reported recently that property values in the city have yet again increased two-point-two percent, which comes out to nineteen million, four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars of increased value. So, do the math at the six-point-five or possibly seven-point-one mils, that's a substantial addition in, uh, money, earnings for the city. Also, I would like to point out that we received a huge, uh, four million, four-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and nine cents from the federal government's Build Back Better Plan, which was passed down through the state of Alaska, with one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of which was put into the public works sales tax fund. This amount, uh, was not included in the proposed twenty-two twenty-two budget, and this amount is several multitudes higher than what this proposed tax would generate. So, I just feel like we did our due diligence during the budget time to trim the budget without laying people off, without firing people, and I think we did that. And, quite frankly, I, I just feel that government in our town has gotten a little too pumped up. I think we, we need to realize the times that we're in, it's time to scale back. I know we're making small steps in some areas, uh, to cut spending, but I think there's more room to be had there, and I think it's time that we start thinking of small ways where we can make it easier for people to live in Ketchikan, to raise families in Ketchikan, and to build businesses in Ketchikan. You know, the two things that were proposed at the budget time was this, as well as the water increase. I supported the water increase because the water department needed to make money, but this, I think it's, I think we've done our job and we need to do a better job, but, but we're working to, uh, uh, cut the budget so that we don't have to keep raising people's costs of living. So, I would strongly urge my fellow members to consider that, and, uh, I would like to see us not increase the tax on the citizens. If you, my last point is, if you look at all the areas in the country where taxes are through the roof, they have the worst economies, the most unhappy people, and people are moving out of those areas such as New York and California, and they're moving to areas like Idaho and Alaska and Florida and places with lower taxes. So, I just think we need to do our job a little more strongly to lower our spending and not raise the people's taxes. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Other comments?
I think, did Janine have her hand up?
Did you have your hand up? Councilmember Gage?
Oh.
No, you did not.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kistler?
I know, uh, we've had conversations behind closed doors that, uh, Mr. Gass was not privy to, that, um, we are going to have to spend some money to retain employees, and there's no way we can do that without...
I would caution you that, that to stop there, please, and continue, but please change direction with your comment, or go, go wherever else you want to go, please. I have a question for the manager. Mr. Gass made an excellent point about the four million some-odd dollar, I don't remember the figure, but it was four million dollars that we got, wasn't Build Back Better, but it was some other government program, that was not accounted for in the original budget. The memorandum attached, that you wrote, attached to this agenda item, does it take that into account?
Not, not exactly, Your Honor. So, the, the funds that Councilmember Gass is referring to, the city council obligated for specific projects, one was for, um, the berth-three dolphin, um, project. So, again, that's the Port Enterprise Fund, we're talking about the general fund, we're talking about, um, property tax revenue. The other, um, project that those monies were dedicated to was, uh, the Show'em Bar Colbert, which is paid out of public works sales tax, um, which, again, is part of the general fund, um, and Michelle can do a better job of explaining if any property tax goes to, um, public works sales tax, and I don't believe it does, that's entirely supported by our sales tax rate and how it's divvied up amongst, um, three different funds. So, I, I understand, um, that the, I don't remember what the exact figure is, that we dedicated to the Show'em Bar.
One-point-nine-five.
One-point-nine-five. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for the, the clarification on that. Anybody else?
Your Honor?
Mr. Matani?
I'm having a tough time. During the budget session, we cut and froze certain areas, cut certain funding, and came up with a figure of four-hundred-some thousand. What happened to that savings? And then, the other areas, we don't have an idea till July thirty-first what our sales tax revenue collection is going to be. I'm having a difficult time, uh, to put an extra burden on the residents of, uh, the city of Ketchikan.
Councilmember Bradbury?
I, this is a difficult topic to have, you know, discussion to have for any of us because we don't want to do it.
It's the worst.
Um, you know, before the last meeting, I was going to vote yes for this because it was on the basis that we were short five-hundred thousand dollars from the budget. Um, it was a specific number. After reviewing the sales tax, um, year-to-date for the fourth quarter, um, that was collected January twenty-twenty-two, um, we, we, the actual revenue or sales tax was five-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated and what we had budgeted for. And so then that kind of then canceled out the reason, the intention for increasing the mil rate, because we said that it was, we put a dollar figure on it. And so now we've made up that dollar figure and more because of some other savings, and so now I'm at a kind of a, a, a point that I'm not supporting the mil rate unless I can be given another specific amount that we are now lacking. I mean, I know the budget that we voted on or went through November and December, um, the reality of that is not probably going to happen because the ships are coming in a lot lower than we had budgeted for, but I haven't seen that, that real number come out of what are we, what are we lacking, um, exactly? Because if, if I'm going to vote on this, I need a specific, this is why, because we didn't make up that, that amount. But now we have, and so I'm just kind of, I'm, I'm in a place where I just, I, I don't think I can support the mil rate unless the budget could be re-looked at and another dollar figure with, comes forward saying that now because of the reduction in cruise ship passengers, we now are lacking the X, Y, Z, um, amount, which I, I, I know that's a lot of work, but for me right now, I just can't support this unless I have that number.
Would staff like to respond? I don't have a specific rationale to answer. Councilmember Bradbury, would, would you please?
Sure, a couple, a couple of thoughts. So, um, the timing for doing a property tax increase is what it is, and it is unfortunately at odds with when we get better figures about what our sales tax revenues are, so the city council has to adopt any increases to, or any changes to the mil levy by Ju-, by June fifteenth. Um, we won't see, um, Q-two, quarter-two, sales tax revenues, um, until in July, right?
Right.
Um, to, to kind of see what the trend is. Um, but we do have concerns, like we expressed, that, um, just based on, um, the low passenger counts, spending trends, that our sales tax projections aren't going to be what we thought they were and what that budget is structured around. So, um, Councilmember Bradbury, you're, you're correct in the sense that, um, the last sales tax report, um, did come in higher, so it seems to have offset that five-hundred-thousand-ish mark that we were wanting to achieve with property tax. But again, with the uncertainty looking forward in terms of sales tax revenues, um, both the finance director and I have real concerns about if we don't do some measure now, are we just walking ourselves into a problem a little bit later when we have more information? Again, to Councilmember Kistler's point, um, we are in negotiations with various bargaining units that will likely have an impact to this year's budget, what those are, don't know yet. Um, and again, this property tax increase has, uh, been deferred for the last two years, it was put in place for the council's direction to afford the two thousand and nineteen compensation plan update, which we have been implementing for the last three years without any means of creating the revenue to support it. which we have been implementing for the last three years without any means of creating the revenue to support it. So I have concerns going forward that after the two years that we've had in the pandemic and the hit that we've seen to the general fund reserves, we're just exacerbating the problem that has already been going on. This year's budget, I recognize there's been some adjustments, but the way that it's programmed, we're operating at one point seven million dollar deficit to the general fund. So our spent programmatic spending is one point seven million dollars above what we projected in revenues, which is inclusive of that um point five mil property tax increase. Shell, is there anything else that you would like to to add?
I just want to point out that the capital projects that were cut during budget time, those don't, those were not general fund capital projects. They were public work sales tax fund projects. So even though they were cut, they weren't cut from the general fund. So that didn't relieve the general fund of costs. The other thing, just to point out that uh Councilmember Gas identified a nineteen million dollar property value increase. We had already budgeted a certain increase because property values tend to go up. So, and they were trending that way. So we take a three-year average. That was already incorporated in the numbers we put into the budget with that point five mil increase. So that only, the actual values only generated another seventy thousand with the point five mil increase. So I just wanted to point that out because that can be missed or it it looks like, and I can understand, you know, nineteen million dollars, well, why do we need to increase the property mill rate? Well, that was already incorporated into the revenue projections for twenty-twenty-two. So I just wanted to point those two things out. I think, you know, uh, there was another comment on, we have maybe too many employees. Well, the only increase is in FTEs over the last, since two thousand and eighteen, and I don't know the increase prior to that, but it was police and fire. And I believe at council, at budget time, everybody was pretty much a hundred percent in agreement that we needed police and fire personnel. So I think we typically are understaffed in police. There seems like they're always needing personnel, so. But we're trying to get more personnel so that we aren't left without enough. So those were just a couple of things that um pointed out. Obviously, the memo states that we have increasing costs. We have freight, we have fuel. We already are seeing departments that use a lot of fuel. And we're going to come back to council because they're going to be short on their budgets. I don't know how much.
No idea how much that might be?
No, not right now. Um, I mean, obviously, we didn't incorporate that into the budget. The prices increased after the beginning of the year. Freight, I think everybody can see that. We're, we're seeing that consistently on purchase orders that freight is increasing. And for example, there was a um a purchase for the water division. This isn't general fund, but water division purchased twenty-five hundred dollars worth of chemicals on a pallet. Well, the freight for that was almost as much as the cost of the item. So that's just an, that gives you an idea of how much things are increasing. Health insurance is increasing. I mean, it's a, it's a burden to employees because of the cost of our health insurance is increasing almost ten percent. When you look at a family that's paying six hundred dollars a month for their share of health insurance, that's a lot. And that directly reduces their income. So uh these are just a lot of things, and I understand your decision is hard. I don't want it. I know my property tax is going to increase as a single mom. I I get it. I understand it, and um I think we all do. But unfortunately, we're in a situation where our reserves are decreasing, and do we want to get to the point where our reserves are to the, to the point where we're laying off more people in our community? Those people that count on these jobs. So anyway, I'm gonna.
Just wanted to follow up on.
Go ahead.
Um, these are all valid, valid points. I'm not saying that there's not a valid point. But what I am saying, if if you're asking um, if me, you're asking me to make a decision based on, well, we we know these figuratively, these problems exist, but there's no dollar amount associated to it. I cannot in goodwill support something that is, has no dollar figure um actually attached to it now. Um, and so I would like for more information to come back before I would support something like this. I'm not saying it's not needed, but I can't just.
Some of that's difficult because it's future data, like future sales tax reports. But Councilmember Zingi, please.
I guess um I understand what you're saying, Shell. Um, you know, it's a burden to a family to pay that health insurance. But what you're asking us to do is to take that burden and put it on to the people who are making fifteen dollars an hour maybe. I have difficulty shifting that, especially when we, there's no firm number that we need. I I have trouble with that. How do we, um, you know, I work with families who own homes. They have jobs. They're not, they're not high-paying jobs. Um, they're struggling. Their property tax is going to go up just because of the assessments, and now we're going to add to that. So I guess without a concrete, and I I understand that maybe we're doing this at the wrong time. Maybe we should be waiting and um doing it for next year, waiting till we have all the figures and knowing what it's going to be. I don't know, but um as I'm listening to everybody's comments, I I don't know that I can, I don't know that I can support this.
Any other comments?
I did have one question on.
Councilmember Kissler, then you, Mr. Gas.
Okay.
So if we don't pass this, what's the prognosis?
It's hard to say, Councilmember Kissler. Again, um, we don't have a lot of information about what the year's revenues will bring up. If they are lower than anticipated and spending is on track, we're again putting ourselves in a position where we don't have a lot to work with for developing the twenty-twenty-three budget. And I think again, we'll be having conversations about how we reduce that expenditure, which is talking about our personnel expenditures because that is far and away the biggest expenditure for the general fund. So again, we might be talking about freezing positions that are vacant. We might need to discuss furloughs. We might need to discuss layoffs. We've been in a trend for three years of uh now, the general fund frankly hemorrhaging. Every year, it gets smaller and smaller and smaller. We have less to work with while we try to meet the needs of the community in terms of the services that we offer as well as rising personnel costs. So if this is not adopted by the council, I think the finance director and I are going to have to have a serious conversation, put our heads together about where this leaves us for developing the twenty-twenty-three budget or even just finishing out the year halfway strong.
Mr. Gas.
Um, I did have a question. I I will be honest. I, I get a little confused sometimes on the different uh what do I want to say? Accounts, budgets. Um, could you, I get, my question is, this of the four hundred and forty, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars that we were discussing that we recently, that the city received, uh a port, a bunch of that went to the port. As we said, one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand went to the Public Works Sales Tax Fund. And I think, you know, I'm a little embarrassed to admit this, but I'll go ahead and say it. I, I'm not having a super clear understanding of how that fund and the general fund are intertwined and how they are separate. Could you go over that again? And then as a kind of a follow-up to that, is the one point seven million dollar deficit projection, that was before that money was received? Is that correct?
So the one point seven million is general fund. The four point four million dollars that we got for LGLR ARPA funds was distributed one point nine five million to the Public Works Sales Tax Fund. And then the rest of that money went to the port fund for a specific project, and the same with the one point nine five million, stormwater projects. So the sales tax is distributed, one point five percent is distributed to the general fund, which is thirty, thirty-seven point five percent of the total sales tax. The same amount goes to the Public Works Sales Tax Fund, so thirty-seven point five percent of all sales tax goes to Public Works Sales Tax. That is distributed to the Public Works Sales Tax Fund for capital projects. And it's another fund that keeps going down and um, and without sales tax revenues isn't going to increase. We've been deferring capital projects for the last, since COVID started. And so we aren't increasing, we haven't increased the capital projects back to the usual annual capital projects because we don't know what the sales tax numbers are going to be. The rest of the twenty-five percent or one percent of the sales tax, so one and a half percent to the general fund, one and a half percent of Public Works Sales Tax Fund. The other one percent, which is twenty-five percent of all sales tax revenue, goes to hospital sales tax fund. I think we all know that the hospital is a building that is expensive in repairs. And we know that the HAC committee has a list of projects that need to be completed, and we don't have the revenue or reserves in that fund to pay for those capital projects that are coming for the hospital. So.
Yes, thank you. Uh, but didn't we, during the budget, didn't we transfer, I forget the amount, but didn't we make a substantial transfer from the uh Public Works Sales Tax Fund to the general fund to quote-unquote subsidize it?
We have an annual transfer of two million dollars every year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay, a couple of comments. This is, yeah, this is the worst, this is just the worst topic, I think, that ever comes before the council. For whatever it's worth, for the last nine years, everything that mill rates done has actually gone down a little bit. So a hundred percent of whatever property tax increases you've seen, if you own real estate in this town, have have been borough assessments. The city hasn't done it. That being said, I don't know how we put this, I don't know how we put this on the 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 public right now. I think kind of what I'm hearing from Councilmember Gas and and some of the others is I I think be prepared if you don't pass this, be prepared for the consequences. So the next budget cycle, if you're laying a guy off and telling him, thanks, but you don't have a job anymore, just understand the genesis or the the path between the decision and and the outcome, right? Maybe that doesn't happen. Or maybe you have seven people in the audience wanting to know why they're getting their hours cut or why they're not getting their programmed cost of living allowance or or whatever, whatever the the consequences are. This is kind of a do-or-die thing tonight, right? This can't come back later?
It can come back one more opportunity. So again, June fifteenth is the deadline. So we wanted to introduce it early. Um, the council wants to have a second conversation or have staff try to provide additional.
Is there any, is there, between now, I'm sorry, is there any reasonable expectation that between now and June fifteenth, there could be more, any more specific data to to guide the the council, you know, who who wants specific numbers?
We, we could possibly have one more sales tax update, but um, again, I don't know. I I think the numbers to date have been higher, but is that in preparation for the cruise ship season? There's more purchasing going on, more, more, more sales tax being generated because that's preparation for the season. And is, is the season going to produce what we're expecting? That's, that's the biggest question. With, with union negotiations coming up, with police, fire, and IBW, you know, how do you pay for that?
That's, that's, I guess that's another option. Instead of looking at this through the lens of property tax, you can look at it through sales tax. That's going to take a little bit more time to implement.
And I think the borough request that it, obviously, it has to be at the beginning of a quarter, and I think they prefer that it not be mid-season, mid-cruise ship season.
That would make sense, but I don't know, does the council have any more appetite for a different type of tax versus property tax? Or do you want to kick this can until the fifteenth? Mr. Gas?
Uh, I would like, I would like to uh take the vote. Oh, sorry. Is it my turn?
I'm sorry. Hold on a sec, please. What?
We'd have to approve it before the fifteenth, so June second meeting would happen.
The June, the Ju-, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go, go ahead.
Um, my opinion is that this is something that, uh, you know, I think we've all been keeping a close eye on for all year. It's something we've been uh aware of and prepared for. Staff has done a good job presenting us with numbers. This is kind of one of those ones where I just feel like we, we ought to go ahead and make a decision. Sometimes I think maybe we, we tend to drag things out a little more than we should. So I, I'm in favor of taking a vote uh on the motion to increase by zero point five mils, and we vote yes or we vote no.
Councilmember Bradbury.
I'm just throwing my opinion out there. If numbers can be produced that are uh relative to like the number that was produced in November, I would consider this again. Um, I'm just asking for actual numbers um that, just like we did in the budget, they gave us a figure that we needed to make up for. Until I see that, and and that goes for any raise increase on, or fee increase on anything is, we need the numbers to realize what we're doing so that the public understands what we're doing. We can't just throw out numbers and and these theories on any raise and expect the public to understand what we're doing. I don't even understand what, you know, what we're trying to cover, you know, financially, you know, a figure. So um, I I'm fine pushing this on to June second, finding another source. I just need a number and documentation attached to it um that makes this cause for.
Are you making a motion to defer?
I hate that word.
What word would you like to use?
I, 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 we can just vote yes or no now. I mean, there's seven of us, six of us, seven of us today.
Okay, so you.
I would move to defer to June second.
I was just putting my opinion out there. I don't have necessarily amendment that I would like to.
Okay.
Or a motion. I'm just, this is discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Kissler.
I move we defer to June second.
Second.
Any discussion on the defer?
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Gas.
Um, to Councilmember Bradbury's point, uh, quite frankly, I think we've gotten all the numbers we can get. There are certain things that just aren't, that are variables, that we we can't be told exactly what the numbers are going to be based on how the remainder of the year goes. But I, I, you know, I outlined some pretty significant savings. We cut the budget at the budget time. I'm not going to get into all of it again. But uh, I think we've got the numbers and, you know, quite frankly, I think we we ought to make a, a decision based with what we got. These are the decisions that are hard to make, but we were elected to do it. So I think I'm going to vote no on the amendment to defer, and uh I'd like to just make a decision on this.
Any other comments?
Um, I guess a realistic question to management is, is there any figurative numbers that can be gathered before June 2nd? And if the answer, if the definitive answer is not yes, maybe we should just vote yes or no tonight. Um, because I don't, yeah, I just, I think if, if there really aren't any numbers to get in two weeks, I would hate for the staff to try to make, you know, more work for them when there is no other numbers.
What say you, Steph?
I guess it depends on how much detail we can get into that. And um, I think they're all just estimates at this point.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunately extremely speculative. And I think we're just trying to shield the city from what we feel right now is a really uncertain situation still. You heard from a lot of merchants tonight that they're not performing very well, um, which means that people aren't spending money. And maybe it's just that their stores and they're spending money elsewhere. I don't know. But there is concern that spending isn't happening, therefore revenue isn't happening in the amount that we had anticipated and structured the budget around. I don't know, again, because we do not collect the sales tax, the borough does, what they're going to be able to give us for sales tax projections in a couple of weeks that would, again, sort of round out quarter two. And that's only, or, and that's only, it wouldn't even be quarter two. It would be, yeah. We still have several more quarters to go to create a full picture of what our, our revenue looks like for the year.
So do you want to reconsider your motion to defer based on speculative evidence? Or do you want to have a call for a vote on that? I'll give, I'll give you the choice.
Budgets are always speculative. We got speculative information back in December and, but at least we had speculation.
Okay, well, let's have a vote on the motion to defer then, please. It was seconded, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yes. Okay, please.
Okay, Bradbury?
No.
Gage?
No.
Matani? Gass?
No.
Zingy? Flora?
No.
Kissler?
Yes.
Okay, motion to divert fails. Let's get a vote on the main motion, please.
Kissler?
Yes.
Matani?
Nope.
Flora?
No.
Bradbury?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Gage?
No.
Riley, I'm sorry, Gass?
No.
Motion fails.
So we will be bringing, just so you know, our resolution back that brings back to 6.6.
Yes. So, yeah, so it, it would keep it at, we have to every year adopt a motion, even if we're keeping it the same, so.
Okay, 786, request to join a first mover commitment for, and I'll, sorry, go ahead, what?
I just have a clarification question. Is the June 15th is in our ordinance? Is like, did we make that date or did somebody else make that date for us that says we have to adopt it?
I believe it has mostly, the borough has to get it into their, their system and bill it. So if they have, they have to have that in time to get it into their system and then bill it.
Okay, so it is a defined, we can't choose to like,
I believe it's.
change the ordinance to maybe like after the second quarter?
Yeah, they have.
I was just asking.
The timing of it has to be approved because they have to give enough time for everybody to, um, they have time frame, yes, notice and, and then, I can't remember all. I mean, I get the thing every year, but do I remember the date?
No, it's fine. I just was learning, trying to.
Yes, it has to go out by a certain date. And then they have to have a certain amount of time to then pay the bill and then delinquencies and then foreclosures and, and so on.
Thank you.
Okay, request to join a first mover commitment for an Alaska, British Columbia, and Washington Maritime Green Corridor Port of Seattle. With a motion.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to direct acting city manager to take such action regarding the request to join a first mover commitment for an Alaska, British Columbia, and Washington Maritime Green Corridor as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second.
Moved in second and discussion. Let's move Bradbury.
Hey, uh, you know, they're trying to find ways to come to our area with less pollution. I think that's always in, in our favor. Um, this might also, I know we've been talking about the electrification of, of the cruise ship ports and that we're needing that match, potential matching funds from someone other than us. And this might help, um, you know, bring people to the table to help fund that, uh, project. If that's something that the council decides to move forward with. And um, you know, the cruise lines are on board with it. I just don't say why, see why we would say, uh, no to cleaning up our environment.
Mr. Gass?
I, 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 this, I have to be honest, this thing was kind of a shocker to me. If I was understanding it correctly, it seems very unreal. I mean, I, trust me, I am a huge steward of the environment. I want no poop being dumped. I want everything being as green as could possibly be, absolutely. Uh, but talking about zero emissions, uh, maybe that's something of the future, but I think it said by 2030 or something. And uh, I don't see a lot of electric cruise ships running around. So I think, uh, my impression from staff in the memo was kind of like, maybe hold off on this, and I would tend to agree with that. Sorry if I mischaracterized the staff's position, but um, it just seems like we would almost be signing something that would be very detrimental to us. So I, I think the intent is good, but there's not really enough substance there to make a decision, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm going to speak to this. I, I, I think this is fluff right now. It, it's, it's way out over our skis. The cruise lines are interested in it. We're still waiting to hear back from CLIA about what we're, what the 10-year plan is. I'm not really impressed with what they're interested in. We've got cathodic protection we can't do. We have immediate needs we can't meet. This might be good someday, but I lose interest anytime the term zero emissions comes up because it simply is, it's, it's false. It doesn't, it doesn't exist. Maybe someday, but right now, obligating ourselves to something like this is, is just the cart before the horse. Anybody else? Okay, so the direction would be then, what's? To, to not proceed? Do I hear?
Not.
Not beforehand?
Not beforehand? We got four hands to just hold off for now? Okay, Steph, does that give you what you need?
Yes, there is a motion on the floor though, so we can do, so not proceed, we can vote on that.
Mr. Gass?
I move to postpone this item indefinitely.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Please call the roll.
One, one moment.
Okay, thank you for fixing that.
Okay, thank you. Um, Gass?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Kissler?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bradbury?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Item number seven, liquor license renewal, Creek Street Cabaret Beverage Dispensary License Number 4799.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council approve the renewal of the beverage dispensary Creek Street Cabaret Liquor License contingent upon satisfactory payment of delinquent business sales taxes and provide the Fire Marshal a plan for repair of the sprinklers and annual servicing of the hood system prior to the regular council meeting of June 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Mr. Ritchie, could you come up here, or Dr. Ritchie, I'm sorry, could you come up here for a moment, please? Question, so during public comment, you said you'd taken care of everything, taxes are current now, is that correct?
No, I said it, it's in process.
It's in the process.
Yes, I, uh, um, am in great hope of having it all completed by your next meeting.
Okay, and you have a plan for the Fire Marshal?
Yes, I'm working with Butch at Catch Can Mechanical. Uh, and uh, he's been out with a look at it and we're putting it together to, to have it all done. And as, I've talked to the President about that too.
Okay, any other council members have questions for Dr. Ritchie?
Uh, I don't have a question.
Oh, you don't? Okay, th- thank you.
Thank you.
Comments?
Uh, I know, um, as a person in the entertainment world that, um, we have been hit harder than a lot of businesses. The jewelry store's been hit too. But it's difficult, COVID was difficult for performance venues. Um, they were shut down, just like cruise ships were shut down. And um, he provides a service that no one else in town really does. And if we shut him down, I think it would be to, it would hurt the town.
Any other?
And he is, you know, moving towards paying everything, so.
Any other, Councilmember Bradbury?
Um, I personally would like to defer this until we can get more information from the Fire Marshal on her, uh, thoughts on the repair of the sprinkler systems. I'm not really too concerned about anything else but fire. I mean, I, when you put a bunch of people in, uh, you know, space, I just worry, it's just something you hear about everywhere else. So um, I, I personally would like to defer this until next meeting when they can work out their, um, all this stuff. And the Fire Marshal could be here to let us know if this is being rectified or not.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
So when an establishment applies to renew their license, we have 60 days to either respond or not. So we can go ahead and defer this to more meetings, but we are in communication with the Fire Marshal about this and with the borough about the taxes and stuff. So if everything is taken care of by the next meeting, then we'll just go ahead and move forward with approving it. And then if it's not taken care of, then we will automatically put it on the agenda for the next one for, um, to be protested.
Oh, okay.
Just to clarify.
No, thank you. I agree with all that then.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So I didn't know how that worked.
Please call the roll.
Uh, question?
Mr. Gass?
So the role being, the vote being called is to do exactly what the clerk just said, is that correct?
Alternate motion number two, Mr. Gass?
She re, she removed her amendment, correct?
As long as what you stated is what I'm voting on, yes.
Yes, okay. So are we okay to?
Riley, are you clear on, on what we're voting on now?
Yes.
Okay, then yes, please.
Um, Gass?
Yes.
Kissler?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Onto approval of vouchers.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move for the approval of vouchers to Parnassus Books in the amount of $17.97.
Second.
Okay, discussion, I think, not.
91 cents, Judy.
Says 97 on my paper.
All my computer says 91.
Want to make an amendment?
Call the roll, please.
Kissler?
Yes.
Gage?
Sure, why not?
Zingy?
Yes.
Gass?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Motion passes. Managers' reports.
Your Honor, I have a few things this evening. Firstly, I wanted to remind the City Council of the special meeting that you have all arranged for next Tuesday, the 24th, at 6:30 here in Council Chambers to meet with our recruiter, Lynn Barbosa, concerning, um, the city manager recruitment process. So that has been set. Uh, secondly, um, I just wanted to let the council know, as you've probably heard or seen, the work has kicked off on Schoenbar for the raw water main work. This is a very, very big and important project for the community. Got a little bit of fanfare, which was good in terms of installing the first Y-valve, which will sort of cut over into our new line. The second Y-valve is currently being installed. And why this is significant, to do that, the town's water is effectively shut off for that period. And so it's imperative that our contractor and also our water crew work as quickly as possible. For that first installation, it went really, really well and within the timeframe, and the town didn't run out of water. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to the Water Division for that work, um, because it was really good. Third, wanted to point out that on Managers' Reports, I have noticed that we have three critical positions that are either retiring or resigning in the next little while. Um, so we have Andrew Mulder, who is our Waste Water Division Supervisor, Curtis Thomas, who has been our longtime Information Technology Director, and also Ed Cushing, our Telecommunications Division Manager. These are all very, very important positions. Some will be very difficult to fill. Yes, they create savings, um, when we look at the budget. However, again, because of their importance, it certainly creates a strain on those departments. And we will begin the recruitment process and may need to update the City Council on the cost of that as that goes on. So just wanted to throw that out there and be aware. The very last thing that I wanted to bring up is with the City Council's direction to move the Ward Cove shuttle bus operation onto the port, I wanted to just circle back with the council, particularly Councilmember Bradbury, on direction to pursue some sort of an arrangement with the dock vendors, given that that will shift and essentially create
Oh, that, no.
more, more passengers for dock vendors, more potential customers. If that is still something that the council would like to pursue.
I, I, I did want to pursue this, but then it was the, well, the council beforehand said that it didn't. Um, I think the shift is actually still less than what was originally calling to dock two. So I think it almost breaks even if this actually, they shuffle a few people down. So I don't necessarily think it's, uh, time is needed if, if that shift is made to change the contract.
I'm not clear on what sort of.
Sorry, the dock vendor contract that I brought up?
No, I know that, but I'm not clear what you're, are you saying you're withdrawing? You want to withdraw that?
The council vetoed, like, they beforehand said that they didn't want to bring it up.
No, it, it, we were given direction to look into it.
Yeah.
Okay, then I want to withdraw whatever, I just think.
So it would remove that?
Yeah, because it's just going to, the shift is just replacing what has already been removed. So then it pretty much breaks even then if this were to, you know, happen. I was only concerned because there was such a decrease down on one and two with the cancellations that I felt it was worthy to, to look at it. But if the shift happens, I feel like it just cancels out itself in my mind, at least.
I agree with that.
All right, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, I had a couple of questions on the notice of retirements. Um, the IT director had mentioned, um, or a recommendation on a replacement. How does that work for the city? Can you like just open it internally and then, how does that work?
We can't open it internally, but there's still a process that we go through. It's not just an opportunity that's automatically given, could have been to an internal candidate. We still go through a process for that person to apply.
Okay, so both on the IT director and the telecommunications director, you will consider just opening an internal since they did do a, you know, a handover? Okay, I was just curious how that works.
All righty, city clerks file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorneys file, nothing. Uh, future agenda items?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, and this is sort of related to the retirement.
Um, and this is sort of related to the retirement of the information technology director. I guess I want to know why KPU doesn't do that function. I mean, KPU handles all of that. I'm just curious, what does RIT do that KPU couldn't do for us? I mean, KPU now stores all kinds of information and is there any way that that could be worked out, it might be a savings, I don't know, I'm just curious.
We, we can look into that, I think it's going to take a little bit of time to understand the history and
Right.
a little analysis, but yes, we can.
But I think it would be something that would be worth looking into to, there might be a savings there. Um, I don't know if it's, so obviously not a, not the next, not the next council meeting, but I think it's something that we should have on the radar, because it might be. I don't know how many people are in that department, I don't know any of that, but I think that given those two are so closely related, there might be a way to merge that, I don't know. That's it.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
Your honor?
Yes.
A lot of old buildings are catching fire, a lot of old buildings and houses and apartments have fire scares. I'd like to see a fire marshal inspection of these old buildings and these residences to see if they need to be brought up to code, or if they, if they have been grandfathered, the grandfather clauses be removed and make these buildings and residences safe.
Okay, but just a question, when I have my business, the fire marshal came periodically, what is the protocol that exists already for that?
So, so there is a protocol, and I don't, I, I don't pretend to understand entirely what that is, but there is absolutely an inspection process, especially for businesses.
So we'll, we'll have that in.
We can put all that together, we can, the fire marshal can, can give a synopsis on any grandfathered properties and what that, that process is and that schedule for doing those inspections, we can get all that information together.
Thank you.
I agree.
Yes.
I, I'm wondering if there's any, and I hate this to be a downer, it was just, I, 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 um, had a meeting at the Presbyterian Church, they invited me over there, um, about, uh, they came out, they've kind of attached themselves to the Voices for Non-Opioid Choices, and, um, one of the things that, uh, you know, just to get people talking about it, so it's not hidden, so that maybe something can be done. I'm wondering if there's a way to find out, to get a tally of the people that are actually dying from opioid deaths. I think we've had more opioid deaths than we had had COVID deaths. And I, you know, I know somebody knows it gets out, you know, but it's not really. It may be just a, you know, we don't want to hear by the day, because then we're saying, oh, well, that guy died, well, he must have died of, or.
Councilmember Kissler, just, so I'm understanding, are you wanting just a, a report to date? Or are you wanting to be advised every time this happens?
No.
Are you wanting like a ten year history?
No, I would like a, an update. Like, maybe quarterly or monthly, I don't know, you know? Um, just so people are aware that it's still, people are dying. Benter Noll is killing people.
Okay, any other items? Yes.
I don't, I don't necessarily know if it's a, a future agenda item or if it's just a manager could simply answer it and my solution would be solved or thought of. Um, but the hawking. Um, I know there's been reports made of hawking to the police department. I just don't know what's happening after, after that point. Um, and so I know staff is an issue. Um, but if it's based upon a report, I'm just wondering, what are the steps? What is that fi- you know, what does that look like, because hockey, I, I was hopped at five times today. Um, I was walking my dog even, and they were still going after me, so. I just, if they're going after me with a dog, I just can't imagine actually being a jurist in this town, so.
So I would like Chief Walls to address this on how they go about addressing complaints.
So after we get a hawking complaint, unless we have a witness, uh, we'll go out and investigate and actually send plainclothes officers out, or detectives out to try to catch people doing the hawking. We've had, uh, okay, I know we had recently that somebody came up and talked about the hawking, so I went and spoke to them afterwards to get the, and it was a little different, you know, find out the facts. So, so we'll have to investigate anything where somebody makes a complaint and says that there was a hawking issue, we'll go and investigate it and go from there, but if we have an eyewitness who wants to testify and is willing to be in half in that, we can use that to further that and, and develop a case against those individuals. Necessarily, we have to see it, so. Uh, any other way, we're gonna have to see it, so if we get a complaint, we're gonna go out there and look for it. Unfortunately, they're not gonna, um, always be, but what I, what we've ran into is that they've been busy a lot of times, and they'll be inside at this point. They do it briefly, and then by the time we get out there, they're already back inside with customers, so it's like a quick in and out, and not having somebody designated there all the time, it, it does hurt. Uh, and it is pulling from us to send those detectives out on the street from doing other things to go, uh, go out there and try to catch them. Now, what I've been doing is going, uh, I've already made the notifications and put out the flyers, I went out there twice already before this season started, actually gave out the hawking brochures and talked about the hawking and smoking brochures, so they're know, they're, all the businesses should, should be aware that this is, this is the rules, and they can't say they don't know the rules. Now, we're going out there, if we catch them, we're not giving them away, we're just gonna charge them.
Is this something that port security could help out with? And the only reason I ask this is because I'm down there every day, and I watch port security sit in that little cubicle on dock one, hanging out on the phone half the time, and they're like in perfect view of the two most aggressive streets in this town. Um, and so I just don't know if like, I'm not saying they need to sit there and watch, but like, if they're down there, and I mean, you can hear the commotion from the dock, and so I just don't know if that's something, since we do have port security off of the port, you know, one at the corner, um, front, then down on Mill, I just wonder if they could just kind of keep their eyes peeled for situations, since they're already out there, they're being paid a really good wage as well, I just didn't know if they could kind of tag that on as well.
Members Zingy, then Mr. Matani.
But are port security, are they adults or are they like kids? I don't know, like, are they?
Right now, they're all adults, but.
Are they?
Except on the weekends.
I mean, and I don't know.
I'm not asking them to like a- approach them, but like he said, if you see it and you, you call in that complaint, then it could be a jurist.
This sounds like maybe it should be a future agenda item.
Okay.
What do you think? It's turning into a discussion.
I just wanted to bring this back up as.
But if you want to make a quick comment?
Yeah, I mean, uh, it's taking away from the police department, I think I've called them several times. And what happens is, these people even know the plainclothes detectives, and they run inside. I think I've called the chief and the police department about five times already, because it's happening outside my window, it's happening outside my door. These are new businesses that come in and bring in the Caribbean way of doing things, and I see it around the block, so.
Deputize me.
I know. Judy's going, Judy's going.
He's done it two years ago.
Can we film it?
I've got it on my video already.
So, future agenda items?
It's a future, sorry, but let's, let's make this a future agenda item, please, okay? Any other future agenda items? Mayor and council comments, General Lee.
Nothing, your honor.
Riley?
Uh, while it's fresh on our minds, I didn't want to start weighing in because it was a future agenda item, but on that hawking issue, uh, I think, I know I'm the guy that always wants to cut everything, but that was one thing uh, that we cut during the budget, if I recall, was we had a pretty lengthy discussion about this exact topic, and there was a, uh, we, we were slated to have a position for, if I recall correctly, for someone whose full-time job would be to do that, and we voted it down. Um, and the important part was that that was going to come, if I recall correctly, from the Ports and Harbors Fund. So I think, uh, I'm glad council member Bradbury brought that up, because I've been getting some complaints about that, and I think it's something we ought to keep in mind going into next year's budget. Um, obviously, this year's up and rolling, but maybe next year, we should maybe discuss that a little bit more. Other than that, thank you to staff and my colleagues for all the hard work. I tell you, this meeting, I put more homework into this one than I probably ever have, and I think it it's good when we're all up to speed on the issues, it makes for a good discussion. Also, we are losing quite a bit more very experienced, very qualified, uh, managers and staff members, so. You know, it's kind of a bummer, right, when we hired the police chief and the fire chief, and now about to hire the manager? Now we're losing a bunch more managers, but, uh, gotta be prepared for that. And I want to just say that I'm very excited for, uh, this hiring the manager process. I wa- I suggest everybody, including myself, have open minds, let's bring our ideas, let's bring our, uh, own unique experiences and thoughts and really hire a good manager, so, uh, with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jay.
I thank the staff for putting in all the work. Thank fellow council members for really being in tune to tonight's meeting. Then I have a report on the Strategic Tourism Committee that meets at the borough. At the last meeting, because I'm on that committee, we came up with the group that is, has the RFP, was assigned to come up with a survey. Survey taken from businesses, survey taken from citizens, survey taken from every aspect of catch a can life, meaning people in every aspect and every area of work. The survey is on the chamber website, the survey is on the borough website. Hopefully, if we can get it on the city website, so we get uh, idea, this committee or this group gets an idea of what tourism should be and what the public is thinking. And that's where this committee is gone, and I think it's a good idea that we all need to go to the borough website and the chamber website and take this survey so that we can move forward with this Strategic Tourism Committee. That's my report, thank you so much.
You bet. Go ahead.
Uh, it was a big week for, um, congratulations to David Johnston and John Kleineger also, uh, the George Fuller Award for Distinguished Service in the Waterfield and KPU TV, I mean, it's shining all over the place.
Abby?
Um, first off, thank you as well, I want to thank, um, the telecommunications division manager and the information technology director and the wastewater division supervisor for their services to the city. Um, we appreciate their work and they'll definitely be missed. Um, and then also congratulations to everybody for the awards. That's huge that our tiny town can stand out that big in a big, big state, I think that's really cool. Um, the, let's see, uh, there was a CEPA meeting la- last week, last Thursday. I unfortunately couldn't make it, but I did get a summary, uh, from staff there. Um, there really wasn't anything crazy on the agenda besides rate increases. Um, currently, we are working through what that should look like in the future. And so I just wanted to keep you guys apprised that we might be seeing something of that nature potentially come down, uh, next year, maybe, something like that, we're still, uh, we just started that discussion, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, so you guys are there, and then, um, just hawking already, I think that's it for today. Yeah.
Okay, Judy.
Um, well, sorry to see Mr. Mulder go, and the same with Curtis. But I have to say that, um, it, it really worries me that Mr. Cushing is, I mean, I'm happy that he's taking his retirement. I personally always feel that it's, uh, easy to hire, not easy, but it's a lot easier to hire a manager than it is to hire someone with vision. And we are where we are because of his vision. And, um, we're not going to be able to just, you know, snap our fingers and, and hire someone great like he was. And, um, I'm sad to see him go. Uh, congratulations, of course, to the award winners. This was a good meeting, it's a tough meeting. I'm glad we, uh, I'm glad it ended the way it did, and I, God, I agreed with Riley again. I'm keeping track. Thank you, Riley, for all your homework.
Twice in the last six months.
I know, scary, isn't it?
Yeah, so. I was actually talking to Mr. Cushing a little bit the other day, and it, it's really tough to lose three people like this end to end to end. Their, their contributions to the community are, are, are really appreciated. And I, I really think it speaks, quite frankly, to our prior managers' ability to assemble a hell of a good team. For Mayberry, Alaska to have the talent that it's had over the years in all of these departments and to see those folks moving on to retirement, and congratulations to them, and I, honestly, I hope it's, I hope it's the best thing ever for them. But these, these folks are just really, really tough to replace. I think the acting manager has done, and, and the hiring committees have done a great job. We have two examples sitting in, in the, in the audience tonight, all you guys can, I'll collect my payments after the meeting. No, but seriously, but these are, these are the toughest tasks that I think that the management has, has to do. And I think we're just going to be really hard pressed in the future, um, to keep it at that level. I, I, I hope we can. It's the best way that staff can serve the community. Um, other than that, good meeting, I don't have anything else, but we do need.
Move to a turn.
Night.